Welcome. I'm David Reese, the Chair of the Rent Guidelines Board, and I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the board. This is the fourth of four public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1st, 2022 through September 30th, 2023. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Christina DeRose. Robert Erlich. Sheila Garcia. Cristian Gonzalez Rivera. Arpit Gupta. Alex Schwartz. Christina Smith. Adan Soltran. David Reese, present. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be our final vote, which will take place on Tuesday, June 21st, starting at 7:30 PM at the Great Hall at Cooper Union. It is located at 7 East 7th Street at the corner of 3rd Avenue in Manhattan. The public may attend in person or may watch the vote live by streaming it on RGB's YouTube channel. Please note that there are COVID-19 protocols to enter the Great Hall. The details for attending this meeting, including the COVID-19 protocols, can be found in the meeting section on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or by calling 212-669-7480 between 9:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. We'll also be taking comments on the proposed guidelines outside of our public hearings. The testimony must be submitted no later than tomorrow, June 16th. You can find information about submitting testimony on our website, nyc.gov/rgb, or you can leave audio testimony by calling 929-256-5472. Before we commence public testimony today, we have a testimony to be presented by HPD. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Let's translate the first part that I said before we welcome our first guests.
Me gustaría darle la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública de la Junta de Normas de Alquiler de Nueva York. Esta es la cuarta de las cuatro audiencias públicas que tomarán en consideración sus comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para la renovación de contratos de alquiler de apartamentos, lofts, o altillos, hoteles, y otras unidades de vivienda sujetos a la Ley de Estabilización de Alquileres de 1969 y la Ley de Urgencia de Protección de Inquilinos de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán la renovación de contratos de alquiler a partir del 1er de octubre de 2022 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2023. Ahora pasaré lista. Por favor, responda si está presente. Christina DeRose, presente. Robert Erlich, presente. Sheila Garcia, presente. Cristian Gonzalez Rivera, presente. Arpit Gupta, presente. Alex Schwartz, presente. Christina Smith, presente. Adan Soltran. David Reese, presente. Que conste en actas que hemos logrado un quorum. La próxima reunión de esta junta será para la votación final, que tendrá lugar el martes 21 de junio a partir de las 7:30 de la noche en el Great Hall de Cooper Union, 7 Este de la calle 7 en la esquina de la Tercera Avenida. El público podrá asistir en persona o ver la votación en vivo al sintonizar nuestro canal de la Junta RGB por YouTube. Tenga en cuenta que existen protocolos para el COVID-19 para ingresar al Great Hall. Usted encontrará los detalles para asistir a esta reunión, incluidos los protocolos para el COVID-19, en la sección de reuniones en nuestra página web, nyc.gov/rgb, o al llamar al 212-669-7480 entre las 9:00 y 5:00 de la tarde de lunes a viernes. También aceptaremos comentarios sobre las normas propuestas fuera del horario de nuestras audiencias públicas. Este testimonio debe presentarse a más tardar mañana, 16 de junio. Usted encontrará datos sobre cómo presentar su testimonio en nuestra página web, nyc.gov/rgb, o puede dejar su testimonio en forma de audio al llamar al 929-256-5472. Antes de empezar hoy día con nuestros testimonios, habrá una presentación especial.
So, before we commence with public testimony, we are very happy to have testimony from HPD. The chief research officer of HPD, Liz Gomer, will be presenting findings from the HVS, and we're grateful that she's spending the time to share them with us.
Is this on?
Yes.
Excellent. So, first off, we've provided copies of the slides that I'm going to reference to you all, since we're unable to project. And for those members of the public who are here, we have copies of our selected initial findings that are in the tables in front. Please feel free to take one for yourself or to share with others. Good afternoon, Chairman Reese, members of the Rent Guidelines Board. I'm Dr. Elizabeth Gomer, Chief Research Officer at HPD, where I am the principal investigator of the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey, or NYCHVS. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before the board today regarding findings from the '21 survey. We made the selected initial findings from the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey available to the public after delivering them to the City Council on May 16th. We shared that report with this board and provided special tabulations to the request of the Rent Guidelines Board staff. Today, I will share the key findings from that report. Slide 1, please. In 2021, there were 3.644 million housing units. This is the largest stock recorded since the NYCHVS began in 1965 and represents a net increase of 175,000 units since 2017, which was the last completed survey. Slide 2. The 2021 New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey reports the citywide net rental vacancy rate to be 4.54%. This vacancy rate indicates that although supply has continued to increase, it has failed to keep pace with the continuing demand for housing. When we break the vacancy rate down further, we see significant variation in the rental inventory. Manhattan had a significantly higher net rental vacancy rate than any other borough at 10%. The net rental vacancy rate was 4.15% for Queens and Staten Island combined, 2.73% in Brooklyn, and less than 1% in the Bronx. On slide 3. There was an acute shortage of housing among lower-cost units. In 2021, the median rent across all occupied housing was $1,500. The vacancy rate for units with asking rents below this level was less than 1%. Units with asking rents at or above $2,300 had a net rental vacancy rate of 12.64%. Slide 4. In 2021, there were 2.274 million renter occupied and vacant available rental units during the survey period. Just over 1 million of these were rent stabilized, representing 44% of the active rental stock. This is statistically the same as it was in 2017, and there was a similar share of rental units that were what the NYCHVS refers to as private unregulated units, or market-rate rentals. Slide 5. Each cycle of the NYCHVS shows the net change in units from the prior survey. That is, the cumulative result of both units that have left the stock and those that have been added. Over time, the NYCHVS has shown minimal net change in the rent stabilized stock and a net increase of private unregulated or market-rate rental units. The NYCHVS measured housing conditions through self-report of the current occupants regarding maintenance deficiencies. In 2021, 14% of occupied units reported three or more deficiencies. On slide 6. Although the share of households experiencing a heating or toilet breakdown decreased in 2021, there was an increase in the prevalence of most individual deficiencies, including presence of rodents, leaks, cracks and holes, broken plaster or peeling paint, and additional heating required. Slide 7. This upward trend was across all housing types. In these charts, we show select maintenance deficiencies per private unregulated units and rent stabilized units over time. We see that rent stabilized units have a higher prevalence of maintenance deficiencies than private unregulated units. Slide 8. The 2021 NYCHVS shows rent burden across nearly every income level. In 2021, we found that more than half of renter households were rent burdened or paying more than 30% of income toward housing each month. More than a third were severely burdened or paying more than 50% of income for housing. The affordability challenge faced by everyday New Yorkers continues unabated. When we examine the share of income spent on rent for the typical New Yorker, all the way back to the first NYCHVS in 1965, we see a clear increase over time. In the last decade, the level of rent burden has remained constant, where the typical New Yorker, regardless of income, is paying more than 30% of pre-tax income on rent. The NYCHVS helps us to identify one component of this challenge: changes in the rent distribution. Between 2017 and 2021, we saw a net decrease of about 96,000 units renting for less than $1,500 and a net increase of 107,000 units renting for 2,300 or more. This is after adjusting for inflation. Slide 9. This is not a recent phenomenon. Over the last decade, from 2011 to 2021, we saw an even larger net loss of the lowest-cost units as rents shifted upward. This graph shows the net change in the number of rental units by rent level in 2021 relative to 2011 after adjusting for inflation. The negative bars to the left show where we have lost lower-cost units, and the bars to the right show the net increase in higher-cost units. Over this time period, there was a net decrease of about 340,000 units with rents below $1,500 and a net increase of just over 335,000 units with rents of 2,300 or more. Slide 10. When we examine the changes in rents over the last 30 years, we see a dramatic shift in rental costs after adjusting for inflation. This graph shows the absolute number of units with rents of less than $1,500 and those with rents of 2,300 or more from 1991 through 2021. Over this period, New York City saw a net loss of almost 610,000 units renting for less than $1,500 and a gain of 430,000 more units renting for 2,300 or more. All estimates are inflation-adjusted and shown in $2021. In summary, there is a net rental vacancy rate of less than 5% overall, a severe shortage of lower-cost units, rents continue to increase, the rent burden faced by most New York City households remains at persistently high levels, leaving households vulnerable to financial instability across multiple dimensions. Thank you for the opportunity to testify about the 2021 New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey, and we're happy to answer any questions.
So, I had a question just in terms of the increase in maintenance deficiencies. Do we have any sense of whether that was caused by the COVID's impact on operations of the buildings, or it shows some kind of deeper problem maintaining properties properly?
It's an important question. Honestly, it's too soon to know what the actual cause of that was, or if this was only a temporary sort of fluctuation, maybe as a result of the pandemic and delays to maintenance during, particularly during pause, or if this does represent something that's more systematic. Our next NYCHVS will start in the field later this year, and so, one of the many things that we're looking to see, if this becomes a longer-term trend or just an anomaly, is the changes in housing quality. But I will say, this, you know, is the first time in many cycles that we've seen an increase, and it is not a huge increase, right, in maintenance deficiencies, but it is a notable one across almost all housing types, and it's certainly of concern to HPD.
Thank you for your presentation. Quick question. I mean, one of the things that we keep hearing in the hearings is that people are claiming that there's a lot of apartments that are being held vacant in buildings, and so, I wonder, I mean, it's like, how much confidence do you have in the HVS's ability to capture vacancies, such as, I mean, it's like, are we, like, how accurate do you think these numbers are? I mean, it's like, in capturing, I mean, it's like, how many units are actually vacant?
Sure. So, I'm happy to answer actually both parts of that question. I'll start, of course, with the validity and accuracy of our data, and we're very confident. The NYCHVS has been the official source of the net rental vacancy rate for many decades, as authorized by state and local laws, and we report with regularity on the supply condition and continued need for rent control and rent stabilization. We have partnered with the U.S. Census Bureau since 1965, and we work very closely with a range of survey methodologies and statisticians to be able to ensure the accuracy and validity of our estimates. That's true of all census products, but the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey is uniquely designed to measure conditions in New York City and to do it in a way that is both representative and accurate. So, that said, when we talk about something like units being held vacant, it's important to note that the vacancy rate that I reported here and that you see in our report is the net rental vacancy rate, which is a very specific and precise measurement that includes units that are vacant and available for rent, such that somebody could move into them during the determination period for our survey. We exclude units that are vacant or unoccupied but are not actively available for somebody to rent, and that's what makes it a net as opposed to a gross vacancy rate, and the HVS has done that for decades. Obviously, those categories have changed over time, along with the conditions that we're measuring, and expanded, but it's, of course, very important that when we measure a vacancy rate for the purposes that it is used, including the housing emergency and decisions such as the one that all of you are making this month, that we actually understand how many units are available for real New Yorkers to move into.
Does this report, actually, report the gross vacancy rate?
It does not. It's not part of what our purpose is, and it's not what we do. We do report, and in that document in front of you, you'll see, we do provide information on units that are not occupied but not available, so it's that sort of class of units that somebody could not rent when we're doing this calculation, and that's a very large number, and it has grown over time, and we show by reason as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My understanding is that you collected this data in 2021, and so, obviously, the numbers, I'm looking at the vacancy numbers for Manhattan being really high, and I'm not sure if there's any other, yeah, I guess just the Manhattan vacancy numbers. When is the next time we're going to have a, you know, a non-anecdotal sense of what Manhattan vacancies look like?
So, the New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey will be back in the field. We are going to conduct a '23 New York City Housing and Vacancy Survey. We actually start data collection on that at the end of 2022, and so, we'll be able to report out on that about a year after we conclude fieldwork, which is our normal cycle.
Okay.
So, yes, and it is important to note that this is a snapshot in time. The data were collected from February of '21 through about mid-July, and so, when we report on these estimates, they're not, obviously, reflecting current conditions. It's retroactive to that period, but I will also add that of all the census products and representative data that we have available for New York City, it is the most recent and up-to-date information that anyone has available.
I have a quick question about crowding in units, because I assume less available, cheaper units means lower-income folks are either, did we see any indication that there was more crowding in units per unit, per family, or what an average rent stabilized household looks like?
Sure. So, we obviously collect a range of information related to all of, not only crowding itself, but also sort of the different components of that, much of which is presented in the selected initial findings. Crowding specifically, we don't see any increase in crowding overall or among rent-stabilized tenants. That's held pretty steady over time, but that said, we do obviously see that there is substantially higher levels of rent burden among lower-income households, as well as those individuals living in lower-cost units, and that is certainly a result of the limited supply.
So, it's okay to infer from the data then that, you know, less available, cheaper units in the auto boroughs with less vacancies means that folks moving from one unit to another are moving more likely to a unit that is more expensive from the one that they're leaving? So, if there are conditions and someone says, "I can't deal with this anymore, I'm going to move," they're likely going to be moving into a unit that is way more expensive than the unit that they're leaving?
So, I don't have data to speak to that, but I can say that what we find in our survey is that there's obviously very low available stock anywhere in the city that is affordable to the typical New Yorker. The current median asking rent for vacant available units is $2,750, which is very high for the typical New Yorker whose median income is $50,000, and of course, you noted in the Bronx, the net rental vacancy rate is less than 1%, but we just don't collect data in such a way where I can speak to where people, the cost of units that people are moving out of and moving into, but certainly, we can confirm that there's a very, very limited supply of lower-cost housing.
Thanks.
I have a question about slide 10. I think you probably won't be able to answer it, but I'm going to ask the question anyway. So, the number of apartments renting for less than $1,500 a year has decreased over time, and one could imagine that's because of the vacancy bonus that was in existence before HSTPA. One could imagine it was because of MCI and AI increases. And with the passage of HSTPA, do we have any sense that that's going to smooth out? That, in other words, you're not going to see as many big jumps in rent? You're going to see the smoother increases that this board authorizes from year to year?
Thank you for that. So, let me explain maybe in a couple of pieces. First, let me speak to slide 10, which reports the absolute number of units at less than $1,500 and $2,300 or higher in each of the NYCHVS cycles going back to 1991, so essentially over 30-year time period. That's all rental units, not only rent stabilized units, and so, when we see and report a net loss in lower-cost units and a corresponding, that increase in higher-cost units, it's a result of many factors, right? And we can't pinpoint exactly which ones are driving that shift in rental distribution. Certainly, it is the creation of newer constructed units that are higher cost. We, hello?
Yeah, we hear you.
Thank you. We provide information about rental units in condominiums and cooperatives, which also tend to be more expensive and are becoming increasingly common in the private market-rate units, but certainly, we've also seen changes in the rent stabilized stock over time. I reported that we've seen about the same number overall, about a million rent stabilized units over this whole time period, but obviously, that's dynamic. Units have exited the rent stabilized stock and become market-rate through decontrol, leading up to the passing of HSTPA, and obviously, over time, we've seen increases in legal rents, as well as contract rents that are reported by the NYCHVS. So, certainly, all of those things are part of the story, although I wouldn't say that they are the only component contributing to that overall shift in rental costs. We, this is, we call them the selected initial findings, because we've only had the data for a couple of months, maybe not even a couple of months at this point, so there's much more analysis to be done. But I will say, in the selected initial findings, we did look at the subset of units in our sample that had registered legal rents, that had turned over after HSTPA was passed, and looked at what those current rents were that we measured, and sort of developed a counterfactual for what they could have been conservatively without the reforms that HSTPA made, and we estimated that the average rent increase would be a minimum of $300 and would have pushed them out of the middle quartile and into the upper rent tier that we see.
I have a quick question regarding the vacancy rates, and the overall vacancy rate for rent stabilized housing, you show is 4.57%. You also show that for older units built before 1974 in buildings with six-plus units, the vacancy rate is 3.05%. And I guess I'm wondering, are those all rent stabilized units as well? Is that a subset of all rent stabilized housing?
Yes, it is. So, those older units, they're not only units in six or more-unit buildings built before '74, but that's sort of what we typically think of as traditionally rent stabilized units here in New York City. They're units that are subject to rent stabilization essentially through ETPA.
So, the higher, so, the older rent stabilized housing has a much lower vacancy rate?
Yes, it does.
It's the newer units that have the higher vacancy rate?
Yes, that's correct.
I think that's it for questions from the board. I would just like to say thank you for testifying, but the Rent Guidelines Board, more than many other agencies, relies on its partners in government for a lot of what we do, so thank you, and thanks to HPD for your assistance.
You're very welcome, and thank all of you.
So, we're going to get prepared for public testimony at this point, and I'd like to thank everyone who's here for attending today. We are looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines, but before we proceed with our testimony, I'd like to go over rules and procedures for those of you who are going to be testifying before the board. Please be aware that this venue requires that you are masked at all times in order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus. This is the way that we all protect each other from the virus. Therefore, you must keep your mask on while testifying, and there are complimentary masks available at the registration desk. If you wish to speak, you must confirm your presence with the RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call out several names in advance in order to let you know that you will soon be called to speak. If you have materials that you would like to distribute to the board, you should give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table near the entrance. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. An additional two minutes of speaking time will be given to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To help speakers keep track of their time, we have a clock. We will start the clock when you begin speaking, and the clock will beep once when you have 30 seconds left, and will continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. I will ask you to wrap up your testimony at a natural break, and so, we can hear from everyone else, and we do expect to have many speakers here today, so that will be an important thing to do. We want to hear from as many people as possible in the time we have allotted for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything that you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand it's our responsibility to make sure that everyone who has taken the time to come here and wait for their turn will be able to testify with a fair opportunity to be heard themselves. We thank you for your cooperation. With that, we're going to-
Estamos aquí caballeros. Me gustaría agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. La Junta desea verdaderamente escuchar sus opiniones sobre los ajustes propuestos a las normas de alquiler. Antes de continuar con sus declaraciones hoy día, me gustaría repasar las reglas y procedimientos para que los que deseen declarar ante la Junta estén al tanto de ellas. Tengan en cuenta, por favor, que en este lugar se requiere que usted use una máscara en todo momento para disminuir la transmisión del virus COVID-19, cubriendo tanto la boca como la nariz. Por lo tanto, debe llevar su máscara mientras declare. Hay máscaras disponibles en la mesa de inscripción, si no, cuenta con una. Si desea declarar, debe confirmar su presencia con el personal de la RGB en la mesa de inscripción ubicada próximo a la entrada de este salón. No se llamará a los hablantes sin que hayan pasado por la mesa de inscripción para confirmar su presencia. Hoy tendremos intérpretes español presente. Cuando se inscriba para declarar, notificarle, por favor, notifiquele al personal si deseen intérprete. Trataré de llamar a varios nombres por adelantado para hacerles saber qué pronto se les llamará para declarar. Si tiene materiales para distribuirle a la Junta, debe dárselos al personal de RGB, ubicado nuevamente en la mesa de inscripción próximo a la entrada de este salón. Intentaré alternar los hablantes entre inquilinos y propietarios, pero puede que esto no siempre sea posible, le pedimos su paciencia. Con el fin de dar cabida a la mayor cantidad de hablantes posible hoy día, cada hablante tendrá dos minutos para brindar su testimonio. Se otorgarán dos minutos adicionales a aquellos que quieran.
Thank you. We have some of our elected officials who are testifying today. City Councilmember Caban is here, and to be followed by Senator Jackson. Welcome.
Oh, sorry. Good evening.
Thank you.
Such a good colleague. Hello, my name is Tiffany Caban. My pronouns are she/her, and I am the city council member representing the 22nd District, which includes Astoria, Rikers Island, and parts of East Elmhurst, Jackson Heights, and Woodside. At the outset, I want to zoom out to the system level and make it very clear what my principles are on this issue. Housing is a basic human need. It is the foundation of a healthy, safe, dignified life, not just for individuals, not just for families, but indeed for entire neighborhoods and cities. And we cannot achieve the public safety outcomes we all need and deserve with the current system of housing for profit. Since housing is a basic human need, we should guarantee it as a basic human right. That is, the purpose of our housing system should be housing our neighbors, not providing the rich with the means to consolidate their wealth. Our housing stock should be owned and controlled on a democratic basis, not treated as a commodity to be bought and sold for profit. We should not have a system that keeps more people homeless in our city than there are vacant units here. We should not have a system that furnishes luxury real estate developers with the windfall tax breaks in order to bribe them into building affordable housing, which is in fact rarely affordable, and then let them get away with breaking their end of the deal. We should not have a system that enables real estate speculators to let the rent they extract carry the loan they took out so that they can just sell the property after a couple of years and make off with the appreciated land value, which they write off at tax time. Instead, we should have a system that prioritizes guaranteeing every single person in the city reliable, comfortable housing for as long as they live here. We should have a system that enables tenants, communities, and the city at large to democratically direct the development of our real estate stock. And now transforming our housing system is a long-term project and goes well beyond the purview of this board or this meeting. So I tell you all this, not to persuade you to act on every part of it, but rather to make it clear to everyone just how comparatively modest it is to demand a rent freeze. Members of the Rent Guidelines Board, freeze the rent. New Yorkers can't afford more rent right now. Not when our neighbors are hurting this badly at the grocery checkout and at the fuel pump. Not when, as the city's own study shows, average incomes need to double to afford average rents. Not when, according to the mayor's survey, the largest in New York City's history, the public identifies housing and homelessness as their number-one priority for enhancing public safety. Not when Albany just budgeted over $2 billion for homeowner tax relief and over $1 billion for landlord relief.
Thank you.
I am almost done, and this is important, so I want to finish. The Rent Guidelines Board should pass a rent hike of no more than 0%, period. That is a modest compromise.
Thank you for your testimony.
That is far less than what we really want and need. That is a small concession compared to freeing our city from the domination of billionaire real estate tycoons, but that is what the Rent Guidelines Board has the power to deliver, and that is what the moment demands.
Thank you for your testimony.
So in closing, I urge you in the strongest possible terms to have mercy on the working-class New Yorkers who are keeping our city afloat during the terrible global pandemic and freeze the rent. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Senator Jackson, who will be followed by Assemblymember Jeffrey Dinowitz.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm State Senator Robert Jackson, and I represent the 31st Senate District in Manhattan, soon to include parts of the Bronx. My district has the highest number of rent-regulated units in New York State. With thousands of households still reeling from the economic strain from the pandemic, the proposed 2% to 4% for a one-year lease and 4% to 6% for a two-year lease is unacceptable. I voice my strong opposition to the unreasonable rent hikes proposed by the RGB. With more than 220,000 eviction cases pending, with an additional 7,000 cases being filed each month, tenant legal service providers are unable to handle overwhelming demand. The least the RGB can do to stop a massive wave of eviction is vote for no increases. New York should protest tenants, not push them out of their homes. In 2021, a record number of New Yorkers faced homelessness amidst a continued policy failure to address underlying causes of housing crisis, which is directly connected to the excessively-high rent prices in our city, the highest in the nation. Any rent hikes could potentially leave about half a million households with incomes below $30,000 at risk of homelessness as they are already paying more than half of their income on rent. And for the past 20 years, families with children constituted between 70% and 80% of those sleeping in shelters each night. My office has received hundreds of calls from constituents who have lost their jobs and depleted their savings to keep up with the rent, but still fall short, all in fear that one wrong move will lead to homelessness. A rent increase will result in the RGB being responsible for the eviction of families from their homes. Policies that displace tenants violate human rights to shelter. The RGB should be focused on how to prevent homelessness, not accelerating the crisis. An increase of up to 6% when New Yorkers are still trying to rebuild their lives would be inhumane and irresponsible.
Thank you.
I urge you to please reconsider the proposed rent hikes. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. We have Assemblymember Dinowitz to be followed by Jermaia Zuffo.
Good afternoon. I'm Assemblyman Jeffrey Dinowitz. I represent the 81st District in the North and Northwest Bronx. And I've lived in the Bronx all of my life. I've lived in a rent-controlled walk-up. I've lived in a rent-stabilized Mitchellama. I have lived in NYCHA public housing. So I know housing, and that's what I worked on since before I could even vote. We have never seen conditions so horrendous as we have in the past couple of years. I have focused, particularly during the pandemic, on trying to keep people in their homes. The legislation that we passed, that I authored and was the lead sponsor of, the Tenant Safe Harbor Act, the eviction moratoriums, which we passed three times, plus legislation that bans landlords from unilaterally putting legal fees on top of rents, that prevents landlords from charging you for your own air conditioner if you purchased it and if you pay your own electric bill, that's awaiting the governor's signature. All these things are meant to keep people in their homes. During the pandemic, if we didn't pass the eviction moratorium, we might have had tens of thousands of people thrown out of their homes onto the streets during the pandemic. The pandemic is not over. I read just a week or two ago that many landlords, I think in Manhattan, said they're not going to rent to people whose income doesn't exceed $160,000 a year. Now, I don't know about you all, but my income is not $160,000, and I suspect that most people here do not have $160,000 income. We cannot allow people to be thrown out of their homes. I don't begrudge a businessperson who provides services, from perhaps making a decent profit. That's not what's happening today. That's not what's happening. We are in the midst of a pandemic which has killed over a million Americans. We can't have people thrown out. Whether or not you think oil has gone up or we have inflation, it doesn't matter right now. They have to wait. They have to wait. This is not the time to increase anybody's rent because if you do it, you're going to make New York City into a giant homeless encampment, and that's not what we want. So please, freeze the rent. Freeze the rent for one-year leases. Freeze the rent for two-year leases. No rent increase this year. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just let the record reflect that Adan Soltran has joined us. We have a full contingency of the board. Our next speaker is Jermaia Zuffo, to be followed by City Councilmember Stevens.
Hello, my name is Jermaia Zuffo. I'll just start talking, okay. I just got hired as a housing specialist at a nonprofit in Harlem, and it's my job to connect housing insecure youth to apartments. Every young person at the nonprofit experiences challenges around affordable housing, and I've also experienced these challenges firsthand and nearly did not overcome them. About 10% of homeless people are youth. According to the annual surveys on DYCD's website, the amount of homeless youth were steadily increasing even before the pandemic. Coalition for the Homeless recognizes that homeless youth are notoriously difficult to count. Despite that, DYCD found a counted homeless youth numbering from the mid-6,000s to the mid-7,000s, and there was not one year the amount went down. The Institute for Children, Poverty, and Homelessness found that homeless youth in high school were clinically absent 63% of the time. This causes educational instability and adversely impacts educational performance and harms young people's pursuit of their education or career. In addition to the complexities of homelessness, young people's income and credit scores are generally lower, and they generally do not have any prior rental history. This makes it significantly harder to be selected as a tenant, especially for an apartment with a decent condition or price. The situation traps youth between a rock and a hard place and wraps them into notoriously burdensome and ensnaring welfare system. In the interest of its own society, government should be working toward breaking the chain. The Legal Aid Society and Coalition for the Homeless testifies that until young people have access to permanent affordable housing, they will truly be unable to fully realize the potential to become self-sufficient members of our city. That's where the RGB comes in. Unaffordable rents are exacerbating and strengthening problems within our city. You cannot ignore the awful impact that landlords continuing to make a massive, nearly 40% profit has on so many thousands of others. This is all real. I pretty much killed myself to graduate school through homelessness and almost didn't. I had years of recurring problems with my housing after I became homeless because of a lack of anything affordable. Because a lack of anything affordable made it such a hard challenge to fix. I lost a voucher that could have changed everything because no apartment was cheap enough. I spent one to two hours every day after work looking for somewhere in the notoriously-cheap South Bronx but was not able to be accepted in something affordable enough for the voucher. And Tom, do not raise the rents again this year.
Thank you for your testimony. We have Councilmember Stevens to be followed by Councilmember Sanchez.
Good evening. I'm Councilmember Stevens of the 16th District in the West Bronx. And I'm not going to say anything that you're not going to hear today. Obviously, we should not be raising rents. We are in the middle of a pandemic. The pandemic is not over, and we need to make sure that our families have homes. It is unacceptable for us to think that raising rents in the middle of pandemic is something that we should be doing. We should be saying we need to be having our families stay put. With this 4% increase, it can actually devastate my community. The average income in my community, in my district, is $26,000 per year. The rent is going up. Inflation is going up. Gas is out of control. So we need to say, let's look at what we can do to make sure that families could afford to stay in their homes. This is going to impact young people. This is going to impact seniors. And I know that everyone's going to say the same thing. But we need you to hear and understand that we need for this rent to be frozen right now. We don't have it. I have constant constituents coming in my office constantly asking for help and support around rent regulations. That is my number-one issue in Council District 16. Families are consistently asking for help. And so what we're asking you to do, to help them. There is no way that people can have a 4% increase right now. This will devastate our communities. And so lead with compassion today. Lead with love today. Lead with courage and say that we're going to freeze it to ensure that our families can stay in their homes and so they can stay put and our families can continue to grow and thrive. All I'm going to say is the rent is too damn high. And so let's make sure--
Our next speaker is Councilmember Sanchez, to be followed by Brian Liff.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Councilmember Pierreina Sanchez, and I represent the district just north of Altia-Stevens, Kingsbridge Fordham, University Heights, Mount Hope, the current epicenter of the New York City eviction crisis. And I also serve as the New York City Council's Chair on Housing and Buildings. I want to thank you, members of the RGB, for holding this hearing today in the Bronx. And I'm here to also strongly oppose and urge you to freeze rents this year. Now, I'm saying this on the basis of the HVS data that you heard about earlier today. The Housing and Vacancy Survey is the most comprehensive tool in understanding the plight of residents and tenants in the city today. And it is because of this survey, the findings of this survey, that we need to make sure we are centering the experiences of tenants. Yes, the inflationary pressures that are being faced by all Americans are affecting all of us. It's affecting landlords. It's affecting everyone. But there is no doubt, not a single doubt, that our lowest-income New Yorkers and our renters are the ones that are struggling the most. In fact, the asking median rent is up 74% since 2014, while wages have only increased 16%. And again, that doesn't include everyone. Our wages in the Bronx did not increase 16%. We have the highest rates of unemployment in the city of New York. And so lastly, the HVS shows this disturbing trend, and the city's housing stock is becoming more expensive and more rundown. We do need solutions. We do need solutions to support our housing stock, but it cannot be on the backs of our renters. Rent-stabilized apartments have provided a critical source of affordable housing instability in New York City for decades. And I implore you to freeze rents this year, thereby staying true to the spirit of the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969, to not partake in furthering the unjust, unreasonable, and oppressive rents that your body was created to disrupt.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brian Liff, to be followed by Larry Wood.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Like so many here, I come for you today completely demoralized at this spectacle. I'm demoralized because these hearings have a foregone conclusion in favor of tenant activists. For so many years of hard data, the board's mandate to approve justified increases. I'm demoralized because your own data shows double-digit increases across the board in property taxes, insurance, utilities, labors, supplies, and repairs, yet decisions seem to be based on who screams the loudest. I'm demoralized because after 70 years of these failed policies, they don't work for anyone. Albany continues to push back-- Albany continues to pass the buck to this board. I'm demoralized because the 2019 laws have done nothing to improve the housing situation, to the contrary. And these increases are the last and only opportunity housing providers have to equalize expenses. I'm demoralized because NYCHA estimates hundreds of thousands of dollars per unit renovation costs, but we, as private providers, are now expected to pay all costs with these increases alone. I'm demoralized because without increased rents, many units sit vacant as we cannot afford to bring them to livable standards after long-term tenancies. I'm demoralized because the only way to solve this crisis is to build more housing, and continuing to suppress reasonable increases only deters that goal. I implore this board to follow the data and your mandate and approve a greatly-needed and justified increase of 8% and 10% for one and two-years leases respectively. Thank you for your time, and please help us. No one else will. Yeah, it's--
Hold on one second, Larry. So we have devices for those who would like to hear the English translated into-- translated into Spanish. There is a table out in the lobby. Casa has been wonderful to come and let us use their devices to help us for simultaneous translation. So we'll make that announcement in Spanish, but if anyone wants to go out, certainly there's devices available. Our next speaker is Larry Wood, to be followed by Vito Signorelli.
Thank you. My name is Larry Wood. I serve as Director of Organizing and Advocacy at the Goddard Riverside and with the S R O Law Project there. I've been testifying here over three decades before the Rent Guidelines Board with and on behalf of S R O tenants. And honestly, I'm just here to thank you for the preliminary vote for the zero guideline for S R Os. I wish I could thank you also for the apartment tenants, but I'm here to focus on the S R Os. There's only a diminishing number of tenants in these remaining S R Os. We estimate anywhere between 10,000 and 15,000. It's hard to know. So it's only less than 1% of the rent-stabilized tenants out there. But they're also some of the poorest and live in not the greatest conditions in those tiny rooms. And I know you've recognized that S R Os are highly profitable because of the transient rentals and the money they get from colleges, tourists, and the city placements. And therefore, you've done a zero guideline for a number of years, and I wanted to thank you. And there's a number of S R O tenants. Most of the remaining ones are seniors. They've become naturally occurring retirement communities for the most part. So on behalf of some of those tenants, Johnny Barnes at 142nd Street says thank you. Carl Harrison, Rooming House on 130th Street. Luvira Sutton, Rooming House on 146th Street says thank you. Robert Conklin, S R O down on West 14th Street says thank you. Richard Berger, 96th Street S R O says thank you. Tyrone Anthony, West 48th Street S R O says thank you. Laura Bang, the old Ben Franklin on West 77th Street says thank you. Ann Cunningham, who used to sit in the front each year with her pink hat that says, "I'm a tenant and I vote." She couldn't come up here, but she says thank you from her S R O on 74th. Nat Eastern on West 90th Street says thank you. Nick Giamaro, also at the West 77th Street with Laura Bang, says thank you. George Grubich at the old Riverside Studios on 71st Street says thank you. And Lonnie Hill down on West 24th Street. My time's out, but I guess my point is, thank you for doing the right thing on behalf of those S R O tenants. And I would also just urge you to do the same for the apartment tenants. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vito Signorelli, to be followed by Avi Garlick.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The data presented by R G B staff this year is some of the most alarming we have seen in the history of this board. Though this board took measures over the last two years deemed necessary to protect tenants impacted by the pandemic, these rent freezes, coupled with zero expense relief for property owners, have had a direct impact on some of the trends we are beginning to see in this year's research reports. As this board now considers rent adjustments that will go into effect in October, stabilized property owners have been hit with additional city-imposed expense increases, particularly through astronomical property tax assessment increases and the largest water rate increase in 10 years that will be reflected on bills beginning July 1st. This is in addition to excessive increases in heating and electricity costs, insurance costs, and labor and supply costs. In RSA's submission report to this board, we highlighted numerous items that not only justify a return to fair and adequate guideline adjustments, but actually require it. The stabilized housing stock is aging more and more every year, and yet building owners did not ask to be in this position. Nobody asked for the city to continue raising property taxes in water bills at such substantial levels. Nevertheless, it's simple economics. The only way these building owners can keep up with these annual increase in expenses while ensuring that safe and adequate living conditions are maintained is through reasonable rent adjustments. Over the years, this board has become a major platform for politicians to come and plead their case for rent freezes and protections for tenants. Ironically, these are the only people who actually have the legislative power to enact real subsidy and voucher programs to help protect low-income tenants and cover rent increases. We strongly believe that this board has everyone's best interests in mind, particularly with regard to ensuring the city's aging affordable housing is preserved for current building owners, their tenants, and future generations. We encourage this board to use your voices, which are greatly respected throughout the New York political universe, to advocate for real housing solutions in Albany. These solutions would ultimately have a long-term impact on this board's ability to set rent adjustments that properly offset ever-increasing operating expenses. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Avi Garlick, to be followed by Anne Korchak.
Good afternoon. My name is Avi Garlick. He/him, I am a researcher, writer, and organizer with the New York Tenants Movement and a trained urban planner. Tonight, I want to pose a simple question. Will granting a significant rent increase lead to reinvestment in rent-stabilized properties? The answer I propose is no, and it never has. Landlords neglect properties, no matter how much we pay them. Every year, our rents get higher, even though the buildings we live in grow older. If you moved into a 20-year-old building in 1992, that same building is now half a century old, and your rent has more than tripled. Not because it was deregulated, just due to annual increases granted to your landlord every year by the R G B. As noted in an April testimony by researcher Jacob Adele, instead of using additional rental income and rising property values to reinvest in our homes, landlords use our rental payments as collateral for larger and larger mortgages, which they use to buy more properties and take out even more loans. We are paying them to take a ride on a debt carousel at our expense. While landlords ride their carousel, New York tenants are exposed to mold, rat, fires, and more. With rents as high as ever, almost one-quarter of residential buildings in this city have rodents. As landlords cash out on higher values on their properties, 10% of no heat, 16% insufficient heat. The way to compel landlords to renovate our apartments is not by paying them more. It is by requiring them to do so by law. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Anne Korchak, to be followed by Elizabeth Casales.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanted to respond to a few things that were said at the hearing on Monday. I heard a lot of tenants speak out about conditions in their apartments. Some of them sounded terrible. And yeah, and I'm not proud of the owners that are behaving, you know, and providing that. But I just wanted to say that this is not the venue for that. I mean, we have H P D and D O B on the city level. We have D H C R on the state level.
Can we let each speaker have the opportunity to be heard, please? Thank you.
Right with a robust tenant protection unit. There are countless non-government organizations like Legal Aid, and there was a gentleman that just spoke here from the Goddard House. There are so many resources to deal with those situations. Your responsibility is to deal with the numbers, right? This data that you're collecting and you're analyzing is important so that we can upkeep the housing. And I just, like I said, I wanted the opportunity to just, you know, add that because I only had two minutes to speak. I did not go over my time, and I just thought it was important to come back and say that publicly, so thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Casales, to be followed by Teodora Figueroa. And if someone is testifying in Spanish, we will give four minutes so that the interpreter has appropriate time to interpret their comments as well.
Buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon. Mi nombre es Marisol Morales.
My name is Marisol Morales.
Vivo en el 1050 de Carol Play. Mi casero es Winberde.
My landlord is Wyndham.
Wyndham. Winberde. Él es un hombre muy raro, pero el hombre tiene 72 buildings.
It's a weird name, but the man has 72 buildings.
Él reclama aumento de renta.
He's asking for an increase in rent.
Cuando él pide aumento de renta, todavía por diez años, la luz de mi cuarto se enciende bajo un hilo, el cual me pasó la electricidad, y él quiere más aumento.
He increases the rent, and then for the last 10 years, I've had an issue with the electricity in my room that is just not functioning. But regardless, he still wants to increase the rent.
Entonces, ¿cómo en esta pandemia podemos que él obtenga otro 72 buildings? Un hombre millonario.
How can it be that during this pandemic, he obtains another 72 buildings? This is a millionaire.
Un hombre, la cual hemos logrado bajo la organización Casa, que nos arregle vivir un poquito dignamente.
And through the Organization Casa, we have been able to have repairs, so we can live just a little bit more dignified.
Pero entonces, ¿cómo este hombre va a tener ganancia sobre su ganancia?
But how can this man have profits on top of profits?
En el bron habremos una decadencia de pobreza única como yo, que yo tengo, que ya prontamente voy a ser desalojada. Supuestamente estaba probada apoyada por el dinero donde se fue, se... No hay.
So it's just going to continue to put people in poverty, impoverish them more, like myself? I'm almost at the point of being evicted.
Mientras que cada uno de usted asegura su casa, mi hogar está en peligro.
While you guys can still go home, my home is in danger.
Mientras que usted asegura su vivienda, los hijos de nosotros no pueden pagar una renta porque está tan alta.
While you guys are dealing well with your housing, our children can't afford their rent.
Mientras nuestros vejecientes tienen que salir del estado cuando le ha dado al estado 40, 50 años de trabajo.
While the elderly are having to leave the state even though they provide it for...
Esa persona no puede recibir un aumento y vivir dignamente en su vejez aquí.
Señora, puedo traducir.
Okay.
Even though they've given 40 or 50 years of their life to work for the state.
Sigue. Entonces, ¿cómo vamos a poder un aumento más? No podemos más.
How can we afford another increase? We can't afford this.
Estamos en la pobreza total cuando si comemos, no podemos pagar renta.
We're in total poverty. If we eat, we cannot pay rent.
¿Cómo ayudamos a estos landlords que tenga ganancia sobre su ganancia?
How can we...
¿Hasta cuándo?
How can we keep giving profits on top of profit? When will this end?
Yo espero que cada uno de ustedes coma conciencia que este pueblo newyorkino no puede más con un aumento.
I hope that all of you get some type of conscience and understand that this New York population cannot take this anymore.
Solo le pedimos justicia a una vivienda justa, accesible.
We're just asking for justice and affordable housing justice.
No como dice el alcalde y la gobernadora, hay hoteles. Queremos vivienda segura para que esos niños puedan crecer dignamente en el estado de Nueva York.
Not how the mayor and the governor say that there are hotels. No, we want housing so that our children can grow in a dignified space in New York.
Yo no me espero que tomen conciencia, no más aumento, porque no podemos más.
I just hope that you guys all get a conscience and don't increase this, because we can't take this anymore.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teodora Figueroa, to be followed by Acela Ramirez.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Teodora Figueroa Flores.
Good afternoon. I'm Teodora Figueroa Flores.
Estamos aquí representando...
We're here representing?
Movimiento del Barrio y Justicia.
The movement of justice for the barrio.
Para que no den aprobación al aumento de la renta.
And asking to not increase or not approve the rent increase.
Porque nosotros no tenemos aumento de salario.
Because we don't have a salary increase.
Nosotros... Ya que nosotros vivimos en malas condiciones, en los apartamentos hay muchas malas condiciones, por ejemplo, en el mío hay mucha humedad.
We already live in bad conditions in our apartments. There are bad conditions. So for example, in my apartment, there's a lot of moisture in the air.
Y muchas de las veces nosotros tenemos que sacar de nuestros bolsillos para hacer reparaciones del departamento.
And many times, we have to take money out of our own pockets in order to do repairs for the apartments.
Para que el departamento esté un poco presentado y vivamos decentemente.
Just for the apartment to look just a little bit more presentable and for us to live a little decently.
Y el casero no lo toma en cuenta.
But the landlord doesn't take that into consideration.
Muchas gracias por escucharme.
Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Acela Ramirez, to be followed by Juan David Flores. Who? Oh, I'm sorry. I think someone spoke when I called her name. But let's hear from Elizabeth Casales now.
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Elizabeth Casales y soy miembro de Movimiento por Justicia en el Barrio.
Good afternoon. I'm Elizabeth Casales, and I'm a member of Movement for Justice in el Barrio.
Estoy aquí para pedirles que nos apoyen para no el incremento de renta.
I'm here to ask you to support us and not increase the rent.
Ya que yo y como muchas familias fuimos afectados por la pandemia.
Given that many of our families have been affected by the pandemic.
Y lamentablemente somos de bajos recursos y no nos hemos podido estabilizar económicamente.
And unfortunately, many of us are low-income families, and we have not been able to stabilize our economic situation.
Al contrario, en vez de dar su voto a los caseros que nos ayuden a nosotros como pueblo.
Actually, instead of helping the landlords, you should help us as a people.
Ya que trabajamos día a día para poder ponernos de toda esta tragedia, y ustedes saben que no fue un año, son tres años y hasta ahora no nos hemos podido estabilizar.
Given that we work every day, day to day, and even through all of this tragedy, we still haven't been able to actually stabilize ourselves because we all know this did not just stop. It's still been three years of this.
Y seguimos luchando para sobrevivir y darles de comer a nuestros hijos. Si ustedes dan el aumento de renta, ¿qué vamos a darle de comer a nuestros hijos? El alimento está muy alto.
We continue struggling in order to survive, but we have to feed our children. Things keep... If you increase the rent, how are we going to feed our children, especially now that food is so expensive?
La renta la quieren subir. ¿A dónde vamos a llevar a nuestros hijos? ¿A dormir debajo de un puente o en la calle, donde sea? Ya no vamos a dar una casa digna.
So rent keeps going up, and then where are we supposed to sleep? On the street, under a bridge? Where are we supposed to put our children to bed?
They're gonna David's house.
Por eso pienso que no es justo y queremos el apoyo de ustedes para no el aumento de renta.
That's why we don't think it's fair, and we want your support to not increase the rent.
¿Qué queremos? No el aumento de renta. ¿Qué queremos?
We'll survive. No to the rent increase.
¿Qué queremos? ¿Qué queremos?
What do we want? For them not to increase the rent? When? Now?
Gracias.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Juan David Flores, to be followed by Christopher Athenios.
Juan David Flores?
Buenas tardes.
Good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Juan Flores.
My name is Juan Flores.
Por esta organización Movimiento por Justicia por el Barrio. Movimiento por Justicia por el Barrio.
I'm a member of the Movement for Justice in the Barrio.
El motivo de estar aquí es para hacernos escuchar la solicitud, no al aumento de renta, ya que muchos...
Our reasoning for being here is to ask for you guys to not increase the rent.
Ya que muchos nos han afectado en esta pandemia.
Given that many of us have been affected by the pandemic.
Ya que la mayoría nos quedamos sin empleo por mucho tiempo.
Since the majority of people were left unemployed for a very long time.
En algunas ocasiones trabajábamos un día, dos días.
And on many occasions, we worked one day, two days.
Fuera de este lugar, teníamos que buscar el sustento para nuestras familias.
And we have to find some way to survive for our families.
A lo cual nos ocasionó retrasos en los pagos de renta.
Which of course incurred back rent.
A muchas personas como nosotros nos ha tocado endeudarnos y ahora tenemos que pagar esas deudas.
Many of us became debt burdened and we have to pay that debt back.
Es por eso que nos acercamos a ustedes, a que nos escuchen nuestra solicitud de no al aumento de renta.
That is why we come here and ask you to not increase the rent.
A muchas familias no pudimos obtener la oportunidad de recibir la ayuda del gobierno.
Many of our families were not able to receive the help given by the government.
Ya que nosotros emigramos a este país por un progreso para ayudar a nuestras familias que se quedaron ahí atrás.
Even though we came to this country to look for advancement for our families that stayed behind.
Ya que depende mucho de los que estamos aquí.
Especially since they depend on so many of us that are here.
Haciendo esa solicitud y nos escuchen nuestros gobernantes de que no nos aumenten la renta, por favor, que seamos escuchados como pueblo y como gente que queremos superarnos y superar a nuestras familias que quedaron atrás de nosotros, las que respaldamos o los que vienen a nuestras espaldas cargamos por ese sustento para que ellos tengan una mejor oportunidad de vivir, una mejor oportunidad de resolver muchos problemas que nosotros no pudimos hacer en nuestro país.
So we are asking for you and all the government officials to not increase the rent, given that our families depend on us for survival, not only here but also back in our countries. We continue working and we have their struggles on our backs and we are the ones that help them survive on top of our families here.
Muchas gracias a nuestras autoridades por haber escuchado nuestras peticiones. No al aumento de renta, por favor.
Thank you very much to the board members for having heard and don't increase the rent.
Our next speaker is Christopher Athenios to be followed by Jugalina Ramirez.
My family and I have been providing affordable housing in Brooklyn for over 50 years. We always treat our tenants with respect, fairness, decency, which they appreciate. Water rates just went up 4.9%. Our real estate taxes have gone up over 15%. The PIOC does not measure the age of our buildings and the frequency at which we need to call a repairman or contractor. It doesn't take into account all the new city mandates. Our plumber increased his rates because of the fuel crisis and rising precious metal, copper. A hot water heater doubled in price over the last two years. Our exterminator's monthly service fee is up because of rising fuel costs to travel around the city and he needs to pay his employees a living wage. Affordable housing providers like ourselves and renters, suppliers, and contractors were all part of this interconnected ecosystem. When the PIOC was low or negligible, I urged the board at the time to pass a minimum renter increase of 2% so that smoothing such increases over several years would soften the blow in times of high inflation and higher PIOCs. Now, this board is suggesting a minimum of 2% when inflation is at a 40-year-high with no end in sight. Kicking the can down the road got us into this mess. An average of 0.75% for the last several years has driven us to the brink. It'll probably push out long-term family ownership like us because we don't want to provide substandard services. Sure, a rent freeze would make some renters really happy, but in the end, who does it serve? It is just perpetuating the demise of the quality of housing. I urge the board to follow the economic data and make the tough decision to maintain and preserve our housing stock and encourage legislators who testify here to stop the grandstanding and offer real relief to the renters who simply cannot afford their rent. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jugalina Ramirez to be followed by Noah Weston. Jugalina Ramirez?
Señora, Jugalina Ramirez. Jugalina Ramirez.
I'm sorry, is Jugalina coming? Yeah, thank you.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es... Que bajarlo más. Está bien este. Buenas noches, mi nombre es Jugalina Ramirez. Estoy representando al Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio. Estoy en desacuerdo con el aumento de la renta.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jugalina and I'm also here with the Barrio Movement and I'm asking as well for no rent increase. Adelante, señora.
Porque muchas familias han cambiado de status, han perdido algún familiar o a la cabeza de la familia.
Many families have changed as of recent and of course, they've lost many people, including the head of household.
Y ahora es más difícil poder pagar un aumento de renta.
It is more difficult at the moment now to pay for a rent increase.
Por eso estoy en desacuerdo con este aumento porque ahora en muchos trabajos no todos somos profesionales. Ganamos solo el mínimo y con eso no podemos pagar un aumento más de renta.
I disagree with the rent increase because not all of us are professionals and again, not all of us are getting salary increases and of course, with this that we make now, there's no way we can pay for the rent increase.
Hay muchas familias que quedaron, perdieron a un familiar por el COVID o hay familias que quedaron con secuelas y ahora tienen en tratamiento médico, medicinas y es más difícil poder pagar ese aumento.
There are many families at the moment who are suffering post-COVID. There are many family members who are now suffering from long COVID or after other after-effects. They have to pay for treatment, they have to pay for medication, and that's extremely expensive.
Por eso estoy en desacuerdo de que ustedes aprueben ese aumento de renta porque uno no lo va a poder pagar y para qué van a aumentar algo que es imposible que uno pueda pagar.
And this is why I disagree with the rent increase because of course, it's impossible for us to pay this. So why would you vote for something that's impossible for us to pay?
Y pues ese es mi desacuerdo, no aumento a la renta.
Please do not raise the rents. Thank you.
I just want to remind people in the audience that if you have not checked in with the desk but you're registered to speak, please check in with the desk because it looks like we're skipping over some names and if people are here, we want to make sure they speak.
Damas y caballeros, si usted se inscribió con antelación pero usted no ha ido ante la mesa de inscripción atrás para certificar que usted va a declarar hoy día, por favor, vaya ahora y hágalo porque al parecer estamos saltándonos participantes o hablantes porque usted no ha pasado por la mesa a certificar su inscripción. Por favor, haga eso en ese momento.
Okay. Yeah, she certainly can. Why doesn't she go next? Asela Ramirez?
Asela Ramirez, adelante, señora.
Yeah, okay, okay. Yeah, I'm a little confused. I think two people spoke during those two slots. I'm not sure who they were, unfortunately.
Creo que dos personas hablaron durante ese cupo, pero no sé quiénes fueron.
But Asela is welcome to...
Sí. Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Asela Ramirez.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Asela Ramirez.
Soy miembro de Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio.
I'm also part of the Movement for Justice from el Barrio.
Señores, yo solo quiero pedirles que por favor digan no al aumento de renta.
Members of the board, I ask you to please say no to the rent increase.
Ya que muchas familias como la mía somos de bajos ingresos.
Since many families, including my own, is of low-income status.
A veces tenemos que vernos obligados o decidir si comprar comida o pagar una renta.
Sometimes we're forced to debate whether we should pay the rent or buy groceries.
Porque no solamente tenemos que pagar una renta. Tenemos hijos en las universidades. Por ejemplo, yo tengo dos hijas en la universidad y me es muy difícil pagar renta, pagar universidad. Hay más gastos.
For example, we... Many of us do not only pay rent, we also pay for tuition for our children that are in college. For example, in my case, I have two daughters that attend college. It's extremely difficult to pay both the rent and their tuition.
Hay gastos de electricidad, gas, internet, medicinas.
There are utility expenses, there are internet expenses, medication that we have to purchase.
Habemos muchas personas que lamentablemente fuimos... Este... Pasamos por lo del COVID, quedamos con muchas secuelas, tenemos mes con mes que estar comprando medicinas. Nos es muy difícil. Yo solamente quiero pedirles...
Many of us unfortunately lived through COVID and even today, we suffer from the after-effects of COVID. We have to purchase medication on a day-to-day basis. I only ask you...
Por favor, digan no al aumento de renta.
Please say no to the rent increase. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Noah Weston to be followed by Jenny Laurie. Noah Weston?
Okay, check. All right. I agree with that. All right, yeah. So this whole time, we have heard that costs have increased for the landlords. Water's gone up, property taxes, and they say percentages. And there's a reason why they never actually say dollar amounts because they know they can eat the cost, but tenants can't. They know... I just got to say this. It is unfair for tenants to have to bear the burdens that, you know, of these costs that landlords should eat when landlords aren't transparent on anything. When we want to get an apartment, we have to show our income, give them a urine sample, do everything under the sun. They don't have to tell y'all anything. And I actually think that you as a body should not approve any rent increases until all landlords for rent-stabilized properties open up their books. If they don't open their books, they don't get an increase at all, at all. That is not moral, that is not decent. I just want to say this. Ann Corchac over there owns two brownstones. Can any of y'all imagine owning two brownstones? Yeah, nothing, me neither. See, the thing is, people like us, we are demoralized because when we can't afford the rent, we have to ration medication, we have to eat less. Ann Corchac could just sell a brownstone. I think there's no comparison between those circumstances. And that's why they are not honest about the material realities they face versus us because they know that if they were to be honest about their actual profits, then y'all couldn't look at yourselves in the mirror at night and, you know, giving them more money. They know that, they couldn't show their face in public, so they hide behind vague figures and distorted numbers. Also, the audacity of them to say, "Oh, we shouldn't pay for the mistakes of bad landlords." You know, we shouldn't... Okay, Vito Signorelli works for the Rent Stabilization Association. Ann Corchac works for the Small Properties of New York. These are organizations that lobby and weaken our tenant protections. So how dare they come here and tell us to hold bad landlords accountable when they help destroy the means of holding them accountable? You need to not increase the rent. You need to stop listening to what they say. They are fundamentally dishonest, they are fundamentally bad people. If you want stable communities, no rent increase.
I would just like to remind people, please make sure that your mask is covering your mouth and your nose. It protects all of us if we do that.
Damas y caballeros, les pedimos que por favor mantengan su máscara y que les cubra la boca y la nariz para que nos proteja a todos.
Our next speaker is Jenny Laurie to be followed by Stephen Talbert Williams.
Thanks, good evening. My name is Jenny Laurie. I'm the executive director of the Housing Court Answers, a nonprofit providing support and legal information to tenants and landlords without attorneys from information tables in the city's housing courts and through a telephone hotline. Since January 15th, when the state eviction moratorium expired, our hotline has been taking about 500 to 1,000 calls a week from tenants who are facing eviction. Most of our work is helping tenants who are being taken to housing court for non-payment of rent and who have had a temporary loss of income due to the direct or indirect impact of the COVID pandemic. We assist by connecting them to legal services, to HRA for one-shot deals and FEPs, to Homebase for possible ongoing subsidies like city FEPs, to the New York State OTDA for eRap applications, which will stay their eviction case, and to private charitable organizations for assistance with back rent and other immediate cash needs. One bedrock requirement of all rent assistance programs is the ability to pay rent in the future. Tenants must show that once the current crisis is resolved, they will be able to stay in their current apartments for at least a year. Rent-stabilized tenants are by far the largest group in New York City with future ability. But you know the numbers. Most rent-stabilized tenants with low incomes are already rent burdened. Tenants we talked to, those facing eviction, cannot afford to move as asking rents for vacant apartments are too high for their incomes. The housing courts have seen about 7,000 new cases filed each month in 2022, adding to the tens of thousands of pre-pandemic cases. The rent increases you are contemplating will make rents more unaffordable and make the city's job of eviction and homelessness prevention all the harder. Please freeze the rents, thank you.
Our next speaker is Stephen Talbert Williams to be followed by Brendan O'Brien.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephen Talbert Williams. I grew up in Stuyvesant Town, Peter Cooper Village. My parents were paying $450, $500 in rent. Tischman took over and raised the rents to 900 and then again to 1,200. Two-bedroom apartment. My mother got ovarian cancer around the same time. At the same time, she made a trust fund for myself called the Linda Williams Beneficial Trust. My parents couldn't afford many things, but the little money she had from medical insurance, she put it in to the actual trust to leave some money for myself so that when she passed away, I'll be able to pay rent, etc. Tischman raised the rents. They made improvements with elevators, carpeting, windows, everything. But just to increase rents so that the next generation would not be able to exist in the apartments. My trust fund was utilized by UBS. UBS then reinvested the assets into Pershing Square Holdings. Pershing Square Holdings reinvested their IPO that UBS took my trust fund from into PCVST. My trust fund was stolen from me as soon as my mother passed away. Technically, I own part of PCVST. I was illegally evicted as a rent-stabilized tenant. They evicted me as if I was rent-controlled. I came home, my key card was locked, I couldn't get in. I went up to my floor. I had a sign on the door, excuse me, saying that all of my property was stolen, taken to a place in the Bronx, actually, where there is an auction.
Thank you for your testimony.
Please help me get off the street. I've been on the street for 10 years because of this.
Thank you for your testimony.
Please help me get off the street. 10 years! I have six prima facie cases in the United States Supreme Court that have gone unhurt.
Thank you for your testimony.
Please get me back into my, any apartment. Please get me off the street.
Thank you for your testimony.
Anybody.
Our next speaker is Brendan O'Brien to be followed by Fabian Bravo. Brendan O'Brien to be followed by Fabian Bravo.
Anybody can help, please reopen my case.
Brendan? Our next speaker is Brendan O'Brien. Welcome, Brendan.
Hi, my name is Brendan O'Brien. I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I'm here, I kind of wanted mainly to say two things. One, when we talk about COVID still very much impacting people and the reason why there needs to be a 0% increase is because even if people, you know, are wearing masks less or they're feeling less worried about the actual virus, what absolutely has not left is the economic impact of the... what absolutely has not left is the economic impact of the pandemic. Like we said, there are some people here who have missed months and months, if not years, of work. There are businesses that have not reopened. There are whole districts of our city that used to cater to the ability for low-wage people to work, but no longer exist or is at a very low rent, a very low, um, level. So the idea that we're gonna start raising rents for people who are, through no fault of their own, unable to pay these rents, I think is a bit ridiculous. Second thing I wanted to say is, we talked about numbers before. If we want to talk about why we think maybe rents are becoming less affordable, the reason why rents are less affordable is because if you allow landlords to do anything, landlords will do anything. The whole point of this board, the whole point of us all talking about this is because there need to be controls on how landlords behave and what they can do. That's why we're all here. And we live in New York City. We live in New York City, that means two things. That means we live in one of the wealthiest nations in the entire world. The idea that like, we're gonna allow these things to happen to low-wage workers when rich people can absolutely do whatever they want, know as many brownstones as they want, is absolutely insane. But two, we do not live in some conservative, far-right reactionary cesspool part of the country where we need to be fighting this much harder. We literally live in a city full of left-wing people, full of left-leaning people, who put you in your seats, who put your bosses in their seats. The idea that we're gonna raise rents for low-wage workers to benefit landlords is a right-wing talking point. It's a right-wing idea, and it's wrong. We should all agree that the concept of us increasing rents for people who should not be able to afford it is wrong and it shouldn't happen, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Fabian Bravo, to be followed by Pilar de Jesus. Fabian Bravo? Fabian Bravo? Welcome.
Buenas noches, a todos, mi nombre es Fabian. Vivo en Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York. Soy miembro de Inquilinos Unidos de Brooklyn y vecinos ayudando vecinos.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fabian Bravo. I live in Sunset Park, Brooklyn, New York, and I'm a member of Brooklyn Tenants United and Neighbors Helping Neighbors. It's a shame that there were no in-person hearings in Brooklyn.
Brooklyn fue un condado que votó a favor del alcalde Eric Adams. Lamentablemente nos dio la espalda por no llevar a cabo estas audiencias.
And unfortunately, Brooklyn was a borough that voted for Mayor Adams, and he turned his back on us completely. According to the housing court earlier this year, there were 22,400 cases of evictions in housing court. Where are all these people going to live if they are evicted from their homes? Where are their children going to live if you choose to raise the rent percentage this year? Not all the money in the world is going to give you one minute of life or happiness. The only thing that we take from this world is the satisfaction of having done good. In my own case, the harassment of the owner of the building is just impressive, which has led to eviction in housing court for the fourth time in the last six years. And an eviction lawsuit is currently pending. Unsubstantiated lawsuits that have been dismissed by judges. For this very reason I ask, is the fairest way possible that you do not increase the rent this year? We are living the negative conditions caused by COVID-19. We now have debt, we worry, we are in anguish, we are anxious, we are going through depression. And now because of the inflation, now we have increases in groceries, gasoline, and public transportation. And it will be even more difficult for me to pay university expenses for my two children. An increase in the rent would be an increase of people living on the street, and that is exactly our fear, living on the street. My testimony and the testimony of other tenants is of solidarity and a call to goodness and of conscience to the members of the board. The right of housing must be a source of peace and harmony for the children of this nation.
Thank you for your testimony.
The right of housing is fundamental. Thank you so much for your attention.
Our next speaker is Pilar de Jesus, to be followed by James Fairbanks.
Good evening.
Good evening.
What do we want? What do we want? When do we need it? Good evening, my name is Pilar de Jesus. I'm the senior advocacy coordinator at State of Justice. But before that, I'm a human being, a human being that is very concerned about the decisions that you as a board are making. Very concerned, because what it's looking like to me is that you're about to be responsible for the next public health crisis we're gonna have if you vote for a rent increase. I don't know if you understand the homeless crisis we have right now. If we add additional homeless numbers, David, I promise you, I'm gonna take note from my mentors of the Young Lords and the Black Panthers, and we're gonna take over. Lincoln Hospital, which is down the block, was taken over by my people. And if you're not gonna hear us for the unfamiliar time about why the tenants need a, a rent rollback or no rent increase, we're gonna take over. And I'm not saying that, like you were there, saying that as a threat, I'm saying that to you as this is a concern, a public health concern. As a tenant advocate, the housing numbers of eviction cases that are filed, the, the, the mental health crisis that you are causing to human beings, causing to legal service providers, causing to tenants, causing to organizers, causing to teachers, causing to even some of the security. I'm pretty sure you probably can't pay your rent, either probably living at home with your mom or about to live at home with your mom. Most of New York City police rookies cannot even afford to pay, so they're living at home with their mom. And yet, the mayor goes on, let's get the guns out of the kids' hands, right? Put a basketball. Well, how about give the kids a home? Don't take away the home from the kids. You wanna see more homeless people for Christmas time? That's what you want, David, and the rest of you? As a servant, I forget, I see him in housing court all the time. Not the nicest man when it comes to human beings. What I'm saying, you're gonna create a public health crisis on top of the housing crisis. This is a problem. And your students, David, that you teach, I wanna know how many of them are gonna be living in the street? And they should ask you how they're gonna afford to live in their home.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is James Fairbanks, to be followed by Kyoka Jones.
Thank you. I am in favor of a rent rollback. A rent rollback. But before that, I am still waiting for an apology, an apology for what I went through from landlords, for the arson-for-profit fires from 1965 to 1975 of some 10,000 apartment buildings in the South Bronx, the abandonment of tens of thousands of more buildings, the half-million people forced to flee for their lives, and for the people who died in the fires. Did I somehow miss the apology from landlord groups such as the Rent Stabilization Association, the Real Estate Board of New York, and the mayor's appointed rent guidelines board? Did I miss that? The South Bronx was rebuilt for low and moderate income tenants. It was rebuilt by low-income tenant co-ops, nonprofit community housing groups, government funding, and by private landlord builders who even made their billions. However, now, since the Jerome Avenue rezoning, landlords are again pushing out tenants of a black and brown community culture by building unaffordable housing everywhere. Affordable for whom? Not for the current residents with an area median income of $25,000 as to my apartment. The first thing you see are steps with ripped-up carpeting, a broken intercom, a broken and unlocked door, a lobby that hasn't been painted in over 20 years, and my prayers that the elevator works. When I recently asked my landlord to paint the lobby in our apartments, he asked me if I was going to pay for it. I answered that I already did when I paid my rent. Almost finished. And don't ask us about insider apartments. When an inspector writes violations, the landlord doesn't even come by to inspect the violations. He merely self-certifies to code enforcement, then he repaired everything.
Thank you for your testimony.
A rent increase? I don't think so.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kyoka Jones, to be followed by Ericelda Hernandez.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I received a call the other day from a person that I know very well that had been approved for EWRAP. She called to say that she was giving up on life. At 70 years old, she couldn't afford the rents, even though her landlord had just received $20,000 in EWRAP. I told her, don't do it. How many more people are gonna think about suicide? Because you're going to push them over to something that they don't even, they can't even imagine, life not living in New York. An increase in the rent will have a tremendous impact in our city. If rents are increased 2% to 4%, 4% to 6%, we will have a double effect of mental health illness. I'm 55. I know I don't look it, but I grew up in a city that was hard. It was hard here in the '70s and '80s. When that gentleman testified about Stuyvesant Town, I went to school at PS40. When I graduated from college, I couldn't even get an apartment because the waiting list at Stuyvesant Town was almost 10 years. Who knew? Do you know that if we increase, if you increase the rents, you're gonna see more couples arguing about financial issues in their apartments, which will increase domestic violence? You will see more suicides, even the gun violence. You think we have gun violence now? We're gonna really have gun violence. More children will be sex trafficked, like my daughter. You know why? Because sex trafficking is a profited business. It's sex slavery. We're gonna see an increase in children being sex trafficked. We're gonna see drug addiction and opioid overdose. And of course, more homelessness. Why? Because in New York, we still don't have people working. Unemployment, do you remember when unemployment ended? It ended August 4th, 2021. People have not even received any income. We're paying more in taxes, not to mention the Con Edison bills. Do you know that the Con Edison bills are between $300 and $800 a month?
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you. Don't raise the rent, freeze the rent. Do it for the children, do it for the homeless, do it for the seniors, and do it for the disabled.
Our next speaker is Ericelda Hernandez, to be followed by Martha Gonzalez. All right, let's, can we, can we, can we allow the speaker to be heard, please? Thank you.
Este, hola, buenas tardes, mi nombre es Ericelda Hernandez.
Hello, good afternoon, my name is Ericelda Hernandez.
Yo vengo en representación a los inquilinos del sur de Bronx.
I am here representing the tenants of the South Bronx.
Yo sé que esto es repetitivo y para ustedes es aburrido porque muchos están como en otro mundo.
I know that for you this is repetitive and a little boring because you're like just thinking about other things.
Pero bueno, les voy a contar mi testimonio.
But I am going to give you my statement.
Ya que yo llevo 17 años en mi apartamento.
Since I have been in my apartment for 17 years.
Y mi propuesta sería que trataran de congelar la renta, si no bajarla.
And my proposal would be to freeze the rent, if not, lower it.
Ya que para nosotros es muy difícil lidiar con esto.
For us, it's very difficult to deal with this.
Eh, porque estamos tratando de sobrevivir. Mi esposo y yo fuimos, este, nos contagiamos de COVID.
Because we are trying to survive. My husband and I got sick with COVID.
Y todavía estamos lidiando con tratar de sobrevivir para pagar la renta.
We are still trying to deal with surviving in order to pay rent.
Pues perdimos, bueno, dejamos de trabajar durante mucho tiempo.
Well, we, well, we stopped working for a long time.
Y es bastante difícil porque el inquilino eso no, digo, al dueño a eso no le importado.
And it's very difficult because the landlord doesn't care.
Simplemente él ha tocado mi puerta para exigir su renta.
He has basically just knocked on my door demanding his rent.
Y pues un aumento sería mortal en estos tiempos para, yo creo que no nada más para mí sino para muchas personas.
This is a very difficult situation, not just for me, for many people.
Ya que estamos tratando de sobrevivir y ya que los ahorros que por muchos años hemos tenido se han esfumado.
Since all of us are trying to survive and the savings that it took us many years to accumulate, they are diminishing.
Y tratamos de sobrevivir día con día para juntar, para pagar la renta, para comprar alimentos, para medicamentos, para los niños, para la escuela.
We try to survive day by day, saving what we can to pay rent, food, medication for our children, to pay for school.
Y yo preguntó, todo esto nos ha dejado, igual como decían mucha gente, problemas de depresión, ansiedad, no nada más para mí sino para mis hijos.
And like many people have said, this has left us all with problems of depression, anxiety, stress, not only for us, but also for our children.
Ya que los dueños solo les interesa el cobrar sin reparar, yo los invitaría por lo menos una semana que vivieran en cualquier apartamento de alguno de nosotros, si ustedes podrían vivir con ratas, con cucarachas, con mo infestado en el baño, que eso es mortal para nuestros hijos.
So, since the owners only care about getting their rent, I invite all of them to spend at least one week in the apartment of any of the people here and see if... Un momento, señora. And see if they can live with rats, roaches, molds that is in my bathroom, that that's very deadly, it's lethal for us and our children. Y pagando renta.
Mm-hmm. Y no solo estante con esto, tener al dueño encima de nosotros porque aparte tenemos que hacer las reparaciones porque yo no quiero que mis hijos se enfermen.
And not only that, but having the owner hound us because we are the ones that have to make, have to pay for the repairs in our apartments.
Y pagar más exagerado luz porque cuando viene diciembre no tenemos calefacción.
And also to pay a higher electricity bill because once December sets in, we don't have heat. They turn it off.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias por su testimonio.
Gracias.
Our next speaker is Martha Gonzalez, to be followed by Kai Pritzker.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Martha Gonzalez.
Good afternoon. I'm Martha Gonzalez.
Somos los inquilinos Sur de Bronx.
We're tenants from the South Bronx.
Estoy aquí hoy en día hablando delante de ustedes por mi apartamento.
I'm here speaking in front of you about my apartment.
Durante estos años de pandemia, yo, mi esposo, todos nos enfermamos de COVID. Yo estando embarazada, de nueve meses, el dueño nunca dejó de seguirme, de tocarme la puerta las 24 horas para pagarle la renta.
Un momento, señora. So during these pandemic years, everyone in my family got sick and I was actually nine months pregnant. But that didn't stop the owner from following me around and knocking on my door demanding rent.
Estoy aquí también porque yo no quiero que el dueño aumente la renta porque para mí es demasiado difícil. Con la pandemia y quedar sin trabajo es demasiado difícil pagar por mi apartamento $3,000 o $4,000, lo que está pidiendo el dueño. Es injusto.
I'm also... Señor, espere. I am also here because asking to not increase the rent because it has been very difficult for me, especially because of the pandemic and the situation now, to pay $3,000 in rent or even the $4,000 that the owner is asking for. That's completely insane. That's impossible.
Y siendo la mamá de tres niños que día a día ahora está trabajando a traer un dinero a la casa para alimento de mis hijos, ustedes estarían justo que mis hijos se queden en la calle por ustedes? Porque ustedes quieren un aumento de renta? No, no es justo, señores. Si ustedes hacen eso para mí y para toda la familia que estamos aquí, nos vamos a quedar en la calle.
So, un momento. And so I have three children and I work, you know, day by day in order to bring money in so that I can bring food on the table. So do you think it's fair that my children wind up on the street because you won't stop the rent increase? That's not fair. And you think that's fair for my children to be on the street?
Por eso, a ustedes les pido que... En vez de que ustedes suban la renta, como llevo muchos años viviendo mi apartamento, casi 16 años, no es justo que el día de hoy lleguen a decir, "Oh, van a aumentar la renta." No es justo, señores.
So that's why I'm here to ask you. If you guys want to increase the rent, it's not fair, especially for someone like me. I've been living in my apartment almost 16 years and it's not fair for the rent to go up.
¿Cuáles son las ayudas que ustedes nos dan a nosotros siendo inmigrantes y pagando los pases día a día? ¿Cuál es la ayuda que ustedes nos ofrecen a nosotros?
What's the help that you guys give us, immigrant people that pay taxes day to day? What's the help that you give us?
Esta pregunta yo se lo hago a ustedes que quieren aumentar la renta, que quieren que el dueño él abuse de nosotros siendo inmigrantes. Eso no es justo, señores.
So that's the question that I have for you. If you want... For those that want to increase the rent and help the landlord continue to abuse people like us, immigrants and workers.
Por eso estoy aquí parada. Y si vamos a seguir luchando para que ustedes dejen de decirle a los dueños le den el chance que ellos... Para que aumente la renta, vamos a seguir luchando hasta llegar a las últimas consecuencias.
So that's why I'm standing here because we are going to continue to fight until the very end against this rent increase that you guys are proposing.
Por eso, señores, les pido que ustedes tomen las acciones ahora. Queremos una acción ahora. Que ustedes le digan a los dueños que no abusen de nosotros. Yo incluso 17 años viviendo mi apartamento para que el dueño venga de un día para otro decir $3,000, $4,000 de renta, no, señores.
So that's why I'm asking you members to take action now, to stop the abuse of us now. I have lived in my apartment 17 years. For what? For my landlord to come now and say he wants $3,000, $4,000? No.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you.
Señora, gracias por su testimonio.
Our next speaker is Kai Pritzker, to be followed by Ray Dietz.
Hi, my name is Kai Pritzker. I'm a tenant in a rent-stabilized apartment in Brooklyn and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I just wanted to say that I feel like this whole process from the very beginning has just been ridiculous because no one in this city is actually asking for higher rent. I don't know where this proposal came from. And I don't know if the Rent Guidelines Board has met any tenants that are asking to pay more rent to their landlord. I think you'd be hard-pressed to find one. So, you know, it's pretty clear that this proposal is coming purely from one side, the landlords, the ones who benefit. So why is this even on the table? You know, why is this even on the table unless, you know, we come to the very logical conclusion that some of these people are collaborating or advocating for the interests of the landlords? And that begs the question, why are you the Rent Guidelines Board? Why are you advising the city on what rent should be? If you're in bed with these people? You know, some of these people, they were falling asleep at the Queens hearing. You know, the woman on the left, she was on her phone. I'm not fully convinced these people are advocating for us. I really don't think they are. So, you know, I just wanted to say this, not to be mean to you. You know, I don't know you. But I want to sober our expectations. These people, the real estate industry in the city has a lot of power and clearly they are influencing this body. And I just want to tell you, whether or not this increase, this rent increase passes, we're not here, you know, for fun. We're not here because, "Oh, we're so cheap, we don't want to pay higher rent." We're here because we can't pay. So even if you raise the rents, even if you raise the rents, even if you collude with these people to pass this rent increase, ultimately, the power lies with us. Whether or not this rent increase is legitimate lies with us. We don't have to pay, but we have to get organized. We shouldn't have to pay because there's plenty of housing to go around in this city. There are plenty of empty homes. But, you know, you're forcing... You're saying that we have to carry the burden of housing in New York City. That's not right.
Thank you for your testimony.
I say that we, the tenants, should get together and we should say, "Absolutely not. We're not paying you until you fix our buildings, until you maintain our houses and stop trying to evict us."
Our next speaker is Ray Dietz, to be followed by Sam Rabiya.
Doing my own tech here, huh? Oh, it's not super funny, but okay. So hi, my name is Ray Dietz. I live in a rent-stabilized building in Harlem and I'm also a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. So I also work with folks who are homeless. And I think it's super cute that the city is here handing out flyers about the Source of Income Discrimination Unit, given that there are zero employees currently working in that unit. And guess what? 100% of the clients I work with every single day have experienced income discrimination because they have vouchers. But enough about that. I just want to take a quick poll here. Who here has seen roaches in their building? Rats in your building? Leaks? No electricity? No heat in the winter? Illegal units? No gas, thank you very much? Peeling paint? Broken elevators? Broken elevators? In units with seniors who cannot climb 16 floors to get to their homes when the elevators are broken? That's right. If you've seen mold in your home? If you've been a victim of tenant harassment? Thank you. I hope you all are seeing this right now. Yeah, I'm just here to say no rent increase and all of you, shame on you. Really, just shame on you. Shame on you. If we can't afford the rent now, what makes you think we can afford an increase? What makes you think any of us won't be out on the streets homeless? I know you don't care because you won't be homeless. But the rest of us? This is a life-or-death situation and you need to understand that. You need to understand that if you choose to raise rent in stabilized buildings, people will die and that blood will be on your hands. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sam Rabiya, to be followed by Magali Herrera.
Good evening. My name is Sam Rabiya and I'm the data lead and engineer at a nonprofit called Just Fix. At a press conference in April, Mayor Eric Adams pressed for rent increases in rent-stabilized housing, saying that we need to look after those small mom-and-pop owners. I'm here to explain how the data does not support Mayor Adams's statement. Simply put, the vast majority of stabilized units in New York City are owned by large corporate landlords, not mom-and-pops. Just Fix built a tool called Who Owns What that helps identify the actual owners of rent-stabilized buildings in New York City and by aggregating and linking public records. Our data is sourced directly from the NYC Open Data Portal and is the same source of data used by city actors like HPD and the Public Advocate. Landlords are required to register their ownership information with HPD. They are also required to report the number of rent-stabilized units within each building to the Department of Finance for their property tax assessments. We use this data in conjunction with the Who Owns What tool to analyze the size and nature of landlords that own rent-stabilized housing in New York City. According to our analysis, landlords who control less than 50 rental units own only 7% of all rent-stabilized housing in New York City. And landlords with less than 10 units own only 1% of rent-stabilized homes. On the other hand, landlords with 100 or more units own 88% of all rent-stabilized housing. And if we look at very large landlords with over 1,000 units, they still own 61% of rent-stabilized units around the city. So in summary, the data unequivocally shows that large landlords own the vast majority of rent-stabilized housing and therefore, large rent increases will serve corporate investors over all others. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Magali Herrera, to be followed by Gordon Lee.
Good night, people. My name is Gordon Lee from Brooklyn County, New York, also known as Kings County and Kings Borough. Or you can also call me Greg. I'm a member of all coalitions, including these ones that you see out here. And I was one of the children who was born when the country's protesting President Nixon, June 23rd of 1973. I'm here because I happen to feel the same way that all these people do about your attempt to increase rent. And I'm serious. Please don't play with me, all right? If the cost of living will keep going up, including rent, how... I don't know. I've been trying to figure out how will we afford basic essentials, including housing, food, healthcare, medicine, and our children's education? That means their future. Now, I could see you have no respect for us so you can't think of us when we tell you why we should not raise the rent. But, well, you have to think of this special other category of people and I'll tell you who it is in a moment. This is Memorial Month where we're supposed to be honoring our troops and veterans who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country, gave their life to protect the freedom of the Constitution and the rights we enjoy every day. That includes affordable housing and freedom from fear. And freedom of fear alone means right to affordable housing. So if you can't think of us, you still have to think of our troops. No more rent increases and roll rent all the way back. You still have to do all that to honor our troops because housing is affordable housing. It's a human right and our troops and veterans gave their life for that too. Good night, thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Magali Herrera, to be followed by Nathan Mitchell. Magali? Magali?
Hola, buenas tardes.
Buenas tardes.
Mi nombre es Magali Herrera.
My name is Magali Herrera.
Herrera. Estoy aquí con mis compañeros representando el movimiento de inquilinos del Sur de Bronx.
I'm here with my colleagues representing the South Bronx Tenants Movement.
Nosotros estamos pidiendo que ustedes piensen un poquito
Señora, ¿cuál es su nombre y apellido?
Eufemia Vega.
Eufemia Vega. Ella es la número 31 en la lista.
Pertenezco a la asociación de inquilinos del sur del Bronx.
pertenezco a la asociación de...
Hace cuatro años vivo en un apartamento del 333 de las 150 donde yo no... Hace cuatro años soy inquilina del apartamento del 333 de las 150. Durante cuatro años yo no tengo gas.
En los últimos años he sido un alquiler en el 323 de la 145.
Es un edificio de 35 apartamentos y no tenemos gas desde hace siete años. Yo vivo hace cuatro años ahí. Ahora nos aumentaron la renta.
Es un edificio con 35 unidades y no hemos tenido gas allí durante siete años. Vivo allí ahora durante cuatro años.
Yo tengo problemas de salud, trabajo, pero no es suficiente para yo pagar un apartamento. Comparto la renta con mi hijo, pero tengo problemas de salud, por lo cual...
Así que tengo problemas de salud y trabajo, pero no es suficiente. Y por eso comparto el apartamento con mi hijo debido a mis problemas de salud.
Por lo cual no puedo trabajar todos los días. Tengo que asistir a mis citas médicas y es muy poco lo que yo puedo aportar para pagar mi apartamento, por lo cual mi hijo me ayuda. Pero él también tiene su familia.
Debido a mis problemas de salud, tengo que ir a mi... Tengo que presentarme a mis apuntes médicos, así que no puedo trabajar todos los días. Y por eso no puedo contribuir tanto dinero y es por eso que mi hijo me ayuda.
Propongo que se reduzca la renta porque un aumento me afectaría negativamente como inquilina mayor. La congelación de la renta no es suficiente porque mi renta ha subido demasiado.
Pido que reduzcas la renta. Como alquiler anciano, esto me afectaría negativamente. Creo que freír la renta no sería suficiente.
Se tiene que pagar luz, se tiene que pagar comida.
Tienes que pagar la comida, tienes que pagar la electricidad.
Medicinas. Y no es suficiente. Y no tenemos ni siquiera gas. Tengo que comprar parrillas cada vez que se me dañan porque no puedo cocinar. Estuvimos cuatro semanas sin agua caliente porque se dañó la broyla.
Así que no es suficiente pagar el gas. Y cuando el gas necesita reparación, hemos tenido que salir y comprar grill para cocinar.
Estuve enferma del COVID, por lo cual me quedaron secuelas. Ahora tengo ansiedad, depresión. Es injusto que nos suban tanto la renta sin tener los servicios necesarios.
Me enfermaron con COVID y tuve efectos secundarios como ansiedad, depresión. Y es injusto que aumenten los precios de la vivienda sin los servicios adecuados.
Por eso les pedimos que tengan conciencia y nos ayuden a las personas mayores, a personas que ya no podemos trabajar igual que antes.
Gracias por su testimonio.
Así que pedimos que nos ayuden y que sepan de nosotros, gente anciana, y nos ayuden porque somos personas que no pueden trabajar de la misma manera que usábamos antes.
Gracias.
Gracias. El siguiente orador es la defensora pública Williams. Bienvenidos.
Un placer. Willian.
Paz y bendición, amor y amor a todos. Mi nombre es Jermaine Williams. Soy la defensora pública de la ciudad de Nueva York.
Lo siento. Defensor pública, estamos pidiendo que todos en el venue se porten mascotas para toda nuestra seguridad. Gracias.
Paz y bendiciones de nuevo, amor y amor a todos. Mi nombre es Jermaine Williams y soy la defensora pública de la ciudad de Nueva York. Gracias, presidente David Reyes, y a miembros del Consejo de las Fuerzas Públicas de Nueva York, por tener esta audiencia. Estoy agradecido de que esta audiencia se expandió para incluir dos audiencias adicionales. El año próximo, espero que el consejo tenga al menos tantas audiencias como antes. La pandemia COVID-19 ha exacerbado enormemente la desaparición de la ciudad y la crisis de vivienda accesible. Es inminente que los costos de vivienda crezcan para todos, incluyendo a los dueños. A medida que la crisis de vivienda se profundiza y la inflación sube, también estoy aquí para decirles que la solución no puede ser exigir aumentos de precios de alquileres que están luchando por mantenerse a salvo. Aumentos de precios de alquileres no resolverán ninguno de sus problemas. No se puede obtener dinero de personas que simplemente no lo tienen. Así que no será capaz de ayudar a los dueños, algunos de los cuales están luchando. Todo lo que hará es agregar a la desaparición que existe y las eviciones que enfrentamos ahora. Nueva York tiene más alquileres que cualquier otro estado. Albany ha fracasado completamente en esta sesión. Good Cause Evictions no obtuvo voto. No obtuvimos un aumento en la cantidad de unidades que vamos a tratar de construir. Cada vez que hacemos esta conversación, están silbados. Todos apuntan a todos los demás a lo que pueden hacer y no pueden hacer. El precio de la vivienda en Manhattan es $4,000. Somos ahora la ciudad más expensiva de la nación. Estoy de acuerdo que la gente necesita ayuda, pero no puede ser de la parte de las personas que simplemente no lo tienen, viviendo en condiciones intolerables. Mi esperanza es que el consejo demande en algún momento que Albany te permita, primero que no veas esto como un caso de uno y todas. Hay dueños malos, hay dueños buenos, hay pequeños dueños y hay grandes dueños. No deberías estar escuchando a personas que viven en estas condiciones con personas que están haciendo lo que se supone que deben hacer como dueños. Pero el fin de todo es esto: los dueños necesitan ayuda y lo entiendo. Tenemos que encontrar una manera de que puedan obtenerla. Pero estos alquileres no han recibido ningún aumento de ingresos. Muchos de ellos ni siquiera han sido pagados durante esta pandemia durante largos tiempos. Tenemos que trabajar juntos para averiguar cómo proteger a estos alquileres. 220,000 personas en todo el estado están enfrentando evicione, 90,000 personas son desaparecidas. Un aumento en el precio de la vivienda no resolverá los problemas de los dueños. Solo empeorará los problemas que ya tenemos.
Gracias.
Por favor, considérenlo. Gracias.
Así que vamos a tomar un descanso hasta las 7 de la tarde. Después de la pausa, escucharemos a Nathan Mitchell, Mercedes Escoto y Eufemia Vega Flores.
Hola.
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 I hope that these lights would warm us up.
I know, I didn't, like when I dressed, I was like, oh, it's gonna be really hot, because there's gonna be a lot of people and it can be like stage lights, so I was like, oh, I'll wear a T-shirt. So last night, I was just wondering, what were his parting words? He said, he was here. Yeah, so he was gonna testify, and actually last night, he told me that I guess the data, the data employee scientist, who did the report, asked, yeah, exactly. But yeah, Satish was here, like sitting off to the side.
I can barely see. You know, I think they emailed, they emailed us just like a minute or two ago. But we should, if Ido is here...
Yeah, I noticed him, because the page was...
You mean, is it 41?
The page is...
Sorry, did, um, did, uh, did they give us these, or did we make them? Okay, all right, because they just copied every other page, so we should let them know, I guess.
There's a double side of the copies. It's very easy to do.
I drink coffee every day.
So we should tell him.
Espero que estas luces se calentaran.
Lo sé, cuando me bajé, pensé que iba a ser muy caliente porque va a haber muchas personas y va a ser como luces de escenario, así que pensé que iba a usar una. Así que anoche, estaba diciendo... Él estaba aquí. Sí, él iba a testificar, en realidad anoche me dijo que creo que el equipo de datos, el científico de datos, quien hizo el informe, le preguntó, sí, exacto. Pero sí, Satish estaba aquí, sentado al lado.
No puedo ver. Sabes, creo que lo mandaron, lo mandaron a un correo electrónico. Pero deberíamos, si Vito está aquí...
Sí, lo noté porque la página era...
Él no llama.
¿Quieres decir, es el 41?
La página...
Señor, ¿les dimos estos o nosotros? Bien, porque solo copiaron todas las páginas, así que deberíamos decirles. Gracias.
Hay una página doble. Hehe. Es muy fácil de hacer.
Trago café todos los días.
Así que deberíamos decirle.
Sí.
¿Enviarlo?
Literalmente, en mi cocina tenía un espresso regular. Depende, depende de lo que tenga, así que ahora mismo, he venido a la cartera y he venido a un espresso, así que ahora solo tengo como helados.
Tienes un café misterioso.
Sí, básicamente. Getting, esto es, bolso.
Oh, sí.
Porque mi Alex Levine, mi madre y mi padre son primos. Arrogante, pero él es... Bien, sí, porque es Zach Bornstein que está...
Oh, Vanessa Gibson.
Son las luces, son las luces. Es fishing. No, lo sé porque sé que cualquier cosa va a mi cuenta de AOL.
Lo veo.
Son los administradores. Estos chicos.
Bien, vamos a reconveniar, y como recordatorio, la registración termina a las ocho. Así que si vinieron hoy pero no han registrado, pero quieren hablar, por favor, chequeen en el escritorio de registración para que puedan registrar, tienes que hacer eso antes de las ocho para ser escuchado.
Bien, daremos inicio a la segunda parte de la audiencia de hoy día, pero sí les recuerdo, por favor, que si usted desea declarar ante la junta hoy día, el plazo se vence a las ocho de la noche, pero para hacer eso tiene que pasar a la mesa de inscripción, que está próxima a la entrada, y apuntarse, de no ser así, no podrá declarar acá esta noche, gracias.
Vamos a continuar con nuestro testimonio, el presidente de la ciudad de la ciudad de la ciudad Gibson está aquí, bienvenido. Mantiene el ritmo. Después del presidente de la ciudad de la ciudad habla, escucharemos a Nathan Mitchell.
Muchas gracias, buenas noches, la presidenta David Rice y los miembros de la ciudad de Nueva York, la Junta Directiva de Rencas, para convenir esta importante reunión. Apprecito la oportunidad de testificar aquí en el Bronx y la reconocida importancia de permitir que todas nuestras voces sean escuchadas. Acceso a viviendas de calidad y segura en nuestra ciudad es un derecho humano fundamental. Es parte del fabrico de nuestra democracia que realmente crea oportunidades para todos los novedosos para vivir en viviendas decentes. Como uno de los principales patrocinadores de la legislación de derecho a la ciudad de la ciudad que fue aprobada por el Consejo de la Ciudad en 2017, realmente he visto a primera vista el impacto de proporcionar representación legal a los habitantes enfrentando la evicción y equilibrar las escalas de justicia y nivelar el campo de juego. Desde el paso de esta ley hemos visto un decreto significativo en las eviciones en nuestra ciudad y en toda la ciudad, pero sabemos que dos años de COVID ha exacerbado la necesidad de viviendas seguras y permanentes. Muchas de nuestras familias han sentido la carga de ser presionados y expulsados. Hemos visto que una de cada cuatro bronxites pierde su ingreso a causa de la pandemia, caen atrás en el alquiler y luchan por las necesidades básicas. El crecimiento overwhelming de nuestro sistema de refugio es real en esta ciudad y la verdadera necesidad de viviendas profundas y affordables está en un alto nivel y simplemente no podemos continuar ignorando este problema. Una potencial subida de dos a cuatro por ciento en alquileres de un año y cuatro a seis por ciento en alquileres de dos años sería devastador para muchos de los residentes trabajadores y de clase media y aquellos con ingresos fijos durante una crisis de vivienda sin precedentes en esta ciudad, incluso mientras intentamos recuperarse de COVID y el impacto que ha tenido en nuestras comunidades. Muchos, muchos habitantes están luchando para mantenerse a salvo y están a punto de entrar en el sistema de refugio y becoming homeless themselves. La estabilización de las familias debe ser nuestra prioridad colectiva mientras trabajamos para asegurarnos de que cada residente tenga un sólido arco de cabeza. Más de medio, todos, más de medio de nuestras familias trabajadoras aquí en el Bronx están encargados de alquileres, gastan más del 30% de su ingreso en alquileres y simplemente no pueden permitirse pagar más que lo que se esperaba de ellos.
Gracias.
Así que voy a obligar al RGB a tomar acción inmediata para proteger el Bronx y proteger a todos los novedosos, muchas gracias.
Gracias por su testimonio. El siguiente orador es Nathan Mitchell, seguido por Mercedes Escoto.
Buenas noches a todos, mi nombre es Nathan Mitchell, vivo aquí en el Bronx y he estado trabajando en la ciudad de Nueva York durante 34 años. Este aumento en alquileres, les pido que ayuden a nosotros porque realmente no podemos permitirlo. Lo que estamos pasando ahora mismo, con las utilidades subiendo, la comida subiendo, todo está subiendo y parece que nadie está pagando. Así que simplemente entiendan que tenemos niños que van a la universidad, tenemos niños que solo están tratando de hacerlo a través de la escuela. Es difícil para muchos de nosotros y entonces los que realmente están recibiendo es el ingreso bajo y el ingreso fijo. Están realmente, realmente, realmente luchando ahora mismo. Fui al supermercado el otro día con la misma cantidad de cosas que compro por $100, tal vez estoy recibiendo una cuarta de eso, no es justo, realmente no es justo. Tienen que venir con un nuevo plan o algo, pero este aumento en alquileres, no necesitamos este aumento en alquileres, volvamos a este alquiler porque no estamos llegando, estás creando un problema que ninguno de nosotros realmente quiere. La homelessness está subiendo, la gente está haciendo robo, la gente tiene miedo de salir de su casa, quiero decir, ni siquiera podemos ir en el autobús, eso, ya sabes, el transporte público, eventualmente va a subir. Así que realmente pensemos en esto, hombre, porque es difícil para todos nosotros ahora mismo, todos nosotros que estamos aquí ahora mismo, la razón por la que estamos aquí es porque no podemos permitir un aumento en alquileres. Gracias, tengan una buena noche.
Gracias. El siguiente orador es Mercedes Escoto, seguido por Eufemia Vega Flores.
Buenas tardes a todos, mi nombre es Mercedes Escoto.
Buenos días a todos, mi nombre es Mercedes Escoto.
Yo me retiro en marzo de este año.
Retiré en marzo de este año.
Trabajadora social de la ciudad de Nueva York.
Fui trabajadora social para la ciudad de Nueva York.
Estoy hablando con ustedes aquí en español porque necesito un poquito de tiempo porque después del COVID quedé un poco atrasada con mi voz.
En realidad estoy hablando con todos ustedes en español hoy porque después de COVID me toma un poco de tiempo para recolectar mis pensamientos.
Yo quiero decirles que no sé, esto se llama, esto que está sucediendo, en mi opinión, se llama discriminación total, no es justo que nosotros estemos aquí pasando por todo eso, con todo lo que está pasando, y ustedes lo saben, ¿ok?
Así que solo quería ofrecer mi opinión, creo que todo lo que está pasando en este momento, hoy, por ejemplo, es utter discrimination, no hay otra forma de decirlo. El hecho de que estemos aquí y que tenemos que hacer esto y pedirle por esto es atrocious.
Exacto, después de todo lo que hemos pasado, saben ustedes totalmente que nosotros no podemos pagar esa renta. Yo ahora con mi ingreso, de retiro, un solo ingreso en la casa, mi mamá, el ingreso de mi mamá es muy poco porque ella también le dio el COVID y está deshabilitada.
Así que todos ustedes saben esto y, por supuesto, tengo un ingreso en la casa, que no es suficiente, soy retirada, el ingreso de mi madre también se factora en eso y ella es desactivada.
Exacto, entonces nosotros estamos buscando solución y ustedes no están creando un problema.
Así que estamos buscando soluciones y lo que están haciendo es creando problemas.
Entonces yo he estado pensando que por qué nosotros debemos, nosotros como los ciudadanos que hemos votado por el mayor Adams, que creó el programa del RGB.
Y, por supuesto, como ciudadanos que votaron al mayor Adams en el poder y quienes en realidad crearon el RGB.
Por qué nosotros, nosotros vamos a pensar, yo estoy pensando que debemos reunir nosotros y también nosotros crear nuestro propio RGB.
¿Por qué no reunimos los habitantes y creamos nuestro propio RGB?
¿No sería esa la mejor solución? ¿No sería esa la mejor solución para nosotros?
¿No sería esa la mejor solución para nosotros?
Gracias. ¿Ok, ok? Así que si hacemos eso, no tenemos que pasar por esta pena porque lo que nos están haciendo es un abuso, nosotros no merecemos esto, somos gente trabajadora.
Si hacemos esto, entonces no tendremos que ser sujetos a este desastre porque eso es realmente lo que es, esto es abuso, somos personas trabajadoras.
Estamos haciendo, pasando pena y vergüenza con las personas que nosotros hemos votado por el mayor Adams, hemos votado por él para que no haga esto, no lo merecemos.
Estamos siendo ridiculos por las personas que hemos puesto en el poder como mayor Adams, eso es ridículo.
Exacto, vamos a crear el RGB que nos apoya a nosotros, que sepa por lo que nosotros estamos pasando, ustedes no saben por lo que nos estamos pasando, o no quieren saber, hay una de ustedes que ni siquiera está oyendo, que desde que llegamos tiene un teléfono.
Así que vamos a crear nuestro propio RGB para que podamos ver nuestros intereses porque, por supuesto, ninguno de ustedes se preocupa por lo que pasa a nosotros. De hecho, algunos de ustedes han estado mirando su teléfono desde el principio, ni siquiera han estado prestando atención a nosotros.
Faltándonos el respeto a nosotros, que nosotros estamos pasando por una lucha de estrés, yo tengo depresión, tengo pánico de que me vaya a quedar en la calle, ¿a quién le gustaría eso?
Y, por supuesto, están haciendo que todos nos pasemos por estrés, por depresión. Incluso he sufrido ataques de pánico porque tengo miedo de que me vaya a acabar en la calle, ¿quién quiere ser subjetivo de algo así?
Exacto, así que vamos a ponerlo todos juntos con el programa de casa, que es un programa de la ciudad comunitaria que nos está ayudando siempre.
Así que vamos a reunirnos y ser, vamos a ser apoyados por Casa, que, por supuesto, ayuda a los habitantes en la ciudad.
Para conseguir empezar a construir el programa de RGB de nosotros, los pobres de los de bajo ingreso del Bronx.
Así que podemos construir nuestro propio RGB para los pocos aquí en el Bronx. Gracias por su testimonio.
Para que ustedes no tengan que pasar y perder su tiempo aquí haciendo, creyendo que no están haciendo caso, no, no están haciendo caso.
De esta manera, no tienes que desperdiciar tu tiempo con nosotros porque, como dije, no estás prestando atención a nosotros.
Solo están desperdiciando nuestro tiempo.
Gracias por su testimonio. El siguiente orador es Eufemia Vega Flores, seguido por Bruce Avery.
Señora Flores.
Eufemia Vega Flores.
Eufemia Vega Flores.
Seguido por Bruce Avery. Bien, pero ustedes, ustedes no, siguiente es Eufemia Vega Flores.
Eufemia Vega Flores.
Gracias. No, 40, Eufemia es 43 y Avery Bruce es 44.
31, pero, no es la misma persona.
Taylor, ¿sabe quién es? ¿Es Eufemia? Es la misma persona, está bien, está bien, Avery Bruce. Avery Bruce. Avery Bruce será seguido por Gardiner Claristine. Bienvenidos.
Mi nombre es Avery Bruce. Mi, mi nombre es Avery Bruce, tengo siete años, miro a mi mamá luchar cada mes para pagar alquileres, otro aumento en alquileres significaría que mi mamá tendría que elegir entre, entre mi... Miro a mi mamá luchar cada mes para... Miro a mi mamá luchar cada mes para pagar alquileres, otro aumento significaría que mi mamá tendría que elegir entre alquileres, comida, necesidades básicas, comida en la habitación o visitas del doctor. Cada año, los dueños de alquileres se dan permiso para aumentar el alquiler, necesitamos pensar en los habitantes que ya están luchando para pagar alquileres ahora. Un aumento, quiero decir, podría realmente poner a familias como la mía en el sistema de la pobreza, no quiero ser pobre. Por favor, piense en mi, por favor, piense en mi mamá y otros, y otros como ella antes de que le das a los dueños otro aumento, solo tuvieron un último año de pandemia y aún no es terminado. La vivienda es un derecho humano, lucha, 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 la vivienda es un derecho humano, lucha, lucha, lucha.
Avery, gracias por su testimonio. El siguiente orador es Gardiner Claristine, seguido por Ernestine Navasquez. Gardiner Claristine. ¿Está Gardiner Claristine aquí?
Está viniendo.
Está viniendo, gracias. No hay dudas. Solo voy a hacer una recomendación, que cuando estás en la parte de atrás para hablar puedes empezar hacia abajo, ya sabes, para que estés listo.
Damas y caballeros, una recomendación, si sabe que le tocará hablar dentro de poco, por favor, vaya llegando acá al frente antes de que le llamemos para que así podamos empezar de una vez.
Buenas noches.
Buenas noches.
Mi nombre es Claristine Gardner y he estado viviendo en mi apartamento durante 35 años. Pago mi alquiler, soy diligente para el dueño, incluso busco al dueño si alguien está destruyendo su edificio porque ese es mi hogar, no porque sea un apartamento, pero ahora está saliendo de control el aumento en alquileres. Tenemos aumento en alquileres, pero cuando tenemos reparaciones tenemos que ir al tribunal para el dueño a arreglar lo que tenemos, eso no es correcto. Y él está obteniendo aumento, aumento, aumento mientras mi nivel de vida está bajando, bajando, bajando. El elevador se rompe constantemente, necesito el elevador, necesito el servicio de elevador. Me encantaría pagar mi alquiler, pero el servicio está empeorando y no es correcto que él siempre obtenga un aumento y yo no obtengo los servicios. Por favor, miren los servicios de los dueños que están pagando alto alquileres y el servicio es así, pobre. Les pido que no nos den, déjenos un aumento, especialmente en esta pandemia, muchos de nosotros no trabajamos, la seguridad social para mí no obtuvo un aumento, tengo que sacrificar entre pagar mi factura y comer, eso no es correcto, no es correcto. Así que les pido que puedan tener un descanso hasta que el sistema se mejore un poco. En este momento no puedo permitir esta subida de alquileres que el Consejo firmó para que paguemos, no es justo, tengan una bendecida.
Gracias. El siguiente orador es Ernestine Navasquez.
Our next speaker is Ernestina Vasquez to be followed by Heriberto Altres.
Ernestina Vasquez, por favor, que pase adelante.
And if the second speaker could come down towards the bottom, that'd be great. Thank you. Heriberto Altres.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, good evening to everyone.
Estamos aquí para que, que no aumente la renta.
So we're here because we don't want rent increase.
Porque nadie de ustedes sabe cómo uno vive con nuestros niños.
Because none of you know, señora, por favor, because none of you know how we live with our children.
Y si aumenta la renta, ¿a dónde nos vamos con nuestros niños? ¿En un puente, en un árbol, en la calle?
If you increase our rent, where will we go with our children? Under a tree, under a bridge, on the street?
El antro me manda cartas y cartas. Me toca la puerta, me toca la puerta, su renta, su renta, su renta.
The landlord sends me letters. He knocks on the doors, on the door constantly and asks for the rent, for the rent.
Entonces nosotros, ¿qué debemos de hacer nosotros como humanos con nuestros hijos?
So what is it that we as human beings are supposed to do with our children?
Queremos que no suba la renta. Queremos que nos ayude, por favor, porque estamos viviendo la pandemia.
We don't want you to increase the rent. We want you to help us, please. We're still living in the pandemic.
Tienen que entender de que las cosas no son a su manera. Ustedes tienen dinero. Nosotros no tenemos dinero.
You have to understand that you can't always have things go your way. You have money. We don't have money.
¿Qué es lo que quiere el pueblo?
What do you want?
Le pedimos, por favor, que sean conscientes.
We ask you to please be conscious of this.
Nosotros estamos viviendo lo más peor de apartamentos.
We're living in horrible conditions, horrible apartments.
Mi apartamento se está cayendo. Hay mucho lequeo. Tengo tres niños.
My apartment is literally caving in. There are leaks and I have three children.
El antro nunca dice voy a arreglar tu apartamento.
The landlord never says I'm going to fix your apartment.
Al contrario, me quiere aumentar la renta, me quiere subir la renta.
On the contrary, he wants to increase my rent. He wants to raise my rent.
Él no es consciente de que nosotros debemos tener nuestro hogar, nuestros hijos tienen que tener un hogar.
He's not conscious that we deserve to have our children, to have our home, that we need a home.
Y por eso nosotros vamos a seguir luchando hasta el final.
And we're going to continue fighting all the way to the end.
Hasta que nos ayude y nos apruebe lo que nosotros queremos. Gracias.
Until you finally help us and we get what we want. Thank you. Our next speaker is Heriberto Altres to be followed by Juan Espinoza.
Alberto.
So Heriberto had to leave because you all made the choice to take a twenty-minute break that folks weren't expecting and now we're going to be going even later tonight. So if it's okay, I'm going to read out his testimony. It's written in Spanish, so I'm still going to read it in Spanish.
Sorry, sorry, only, only the registered speaker could speak. We'll move on to Juan Espinoza.
I can't just read his testimony. I have it right. It's written down. I can give it to you.
Yeah, you can give it to us. That's fine. We'll, we'll take the testimony. Thank you so much.
Can I read it out and then give it to you?
Our next speaker is Juan Espinoza.
Juan Espinoza.
What do you want me to do?
Juan Espinoza followed by Judith Marsha.
Juan Espinoza.
I really can't read this out. It's going to take less than two minutes. They're going to be chanting for more than two minutes.
Juan Espinoza to be followed by Judith Marsha.
Juan Espinoza, por favor.
Okay, I'm going to read this really quickly. Buenas noches.
Our next speaker is Juan Espinoza.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Heriberto Altreche. Vivo en el Bronx.
Our next speaker is Juan Espinoza.
Por cincuenta y cuatro años le he visto todo tiempo pasar y presente. Soy miembro de Casa. Me han estado con los tenants y estoy orgulloso de luchar con ellos, con los inquilinos. Y aquí estoy para exigir, para los inquilinos que los caseros nos arreglen nuestros apartamentos. Hemos luchado por mucho años por arreglos en la casa y no nos hizo por mucho años. Estamos afectados económicamente y de otra forma en esta pandemia global no se acaba.
Are you going to translate? Okay. So it's fine, I can translate. My name, good evening, everyone. My name is Heriberto Altreche and I've lived in the Bronx for fifty-four years. I've seen a lot in my time, even now. I'm also a member of Casa and I'm here representing the tenants. I'm very proud to fight with them and I'm here because the landlords don't fix anything. They don't fix anything in our apartments. We've been fighting for years for all the repairs and they don't do them. We've been very affected economically and in other forms by this pandemic, this global pandemic, which hasn't ended, and that is the reason that I'm asking for no rent increases this year. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Juan Espinoza to be followed by Judith Marsha.
Juan Espinoza es nuestro próximo declarante.
Buenas tardes.
Good evening, everyone.
Yo me llamo Juan y Juan Espinoza.
My name is Juan Espinoza.
Sí, y eso es lo que hoy aquí estoy también luchando con la, con la lucha y eso es lo que hoy ya, ya estoy con ese, los seres humanos, ese, los inquilinos aquí con, somos pobres y eso lo tenemos que...
I too, I'm fighting for, for this. I'm here with the tenants, with the other human beings that are here and we're fighting for this.
Hoy yo quiero saber qué, qué está ahí de frente. Yo estoy ahí de frente y eso es lo que, este, conocer que cómo, cómo están ellos y eso es lo que yo, yo estoy, hoy, hoy yo estoy enfermo, hoy no he comido, trabajé tres horas y cuánto, cuánto estoy ganando y no más puedo...
So I'm actually very afraid of what's going on today. Only worked three hours and I'd really like to know what's going on.
Y hoy ya, yo, hoy tengo hambre, no, no he comido y que, y eso lo hoy estoy contando aquí, este, ya me quiere desmayar y entonces eso es lo que hoy...
I'm very hungry. I haven't eaten. I feel like I'm going to faint.
Y estoy aquí aguantando con el hambre y...
And I'm here, I'm hungry, and I'm making it through.
Y, y ahí donde, ayer también donde, yo ya, yo no vivo, ayer donde voy a vivía y ahora ya vivo, pues ahí eso es lo que, este, pues ya también estoy pagando la renta y ahí yo no...
I no longer live where I did and I'm still paying the rent.
Y también yo hoy, hoy aquí, aquí estoy con miedo, pero sí, con, con poco valor con los, mis compañeros aquí los...
I'm here and afraid, but I'm here to support my partners, my comrades.
Porque yo estoy sufriendo más porque yo, yo hablo en Nahuatl, pero sí, aquí con, con miedo hablando.
I'm suffering a lot because actually I don't speak Spanish. I speak Nahuatl and I'm struggling here to do this and I'm afraid.
Eso es lo que voy ya, ese no quiero conocer cómo voy a salir de este porque yo no, yo no puedo, yo voy a, ya en México, mi familia hoy está enfermo.
I'd like to find a solution to this. My family's in Mexico. They are ill.
Y eso es lo que voy ya, y estoy aquí a luchar y cómo voy a estar, cómo esos, esos días y porque no, yo hoy ya estoy, estoy triste.
I'm here to fight. I'm sad, but I'm here to fight.
Porque, porque eso es lo que, yo, yo vengo, este, yo vengo aquí con los mis compañeras, mis compañeros también, pues eso, unos también que me, me da lástima por, también ellos también, pues, por eso yo estoy acompañando de aquí.
I'm here with my comrades, but it saddens me to see what's happening, but I'm here to support them. I'm here with them.
Por eso es lo que voy ya estoy triste en aquí, pues aquí estoy triste, pues eso es lo que yo necesito ayuda.
And I'm sad and I need help. Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Our next speaker is Judith Marsha to be followed by Julius Bennett.
Okay. Okay, give me a minute. Give me a minute. Okay, I'm trying. Here I go. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back. My name is Judith Marsha. I'm a retired senior that lives in the Bronx. I live, live at thirteen ten Sheridan Avenue. I'm on a fixed income. Where do I have a lot of money for extra expenses and I have to manage my finances very carefully? Throughout the pandemic, we have dealt with soaring prices on everything and this has decreased my quality of life. This rate was estimated at eight point three percent, but I have felt a much larger impact, especially living on a fixed income. However, I cut back on necessary expenses, including medical and prescription costs and food costs to ensure that I pay my portion of the rent and I never missed a single payment throughout the whole pandemic. Now landlords are asking for rent increases of the nine, nine percent. Where is this money supposed to come from? At my age, I am no longer able to work. My family helps me with expenses. I can't manage on my own, but they have been affected by inflation too. Am I going to have to live on the street? I wouldn't survive at my age. I'm, would like, I'm asking for a rent rollback. I stand in, I stand in long pantry lines trying to get some extra food so I can help myself, myself and my Casa members and everyone. Give us a rent rollback. I mean, everything is expensive. Go to the supermarket, the price of milk, bread. Well, come on, meat. I have to eat. I'm a senior over seventy years old. Imagine looking at somebody like me standing in a pantry line. That hurts. But all I'm asking for is a rent rollback.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Julius Bennett to be followed by Kim Stettuto. And, and a reminder that registration closes at eight o'clock. So if you want to speak but have not registered, you should check in at the registration desk if you have not yet signed up.
Damas y caballeros, si no se han inscrito para las ocho de la noche, no podrán declarar. Por favor, si desean declarar, pasen con la mesa de inscripción adelante, próxima entrada. Gracias.
Welcome.
Thank you. I bring you a different presentation. I'd like to sing a little song for you. People moving in, people moving out. Why? Because of the color of the skin. Run, 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 but you sure can't hide up all the confusion. That's what the world is today. The problem that I see is the world is a world of confusion. There is tyranny at the top of the world in our government. We have presidents who defile the independence of decoration. Nothing is done about it. If we would take the million dollars a day for two days that a president took while posing as the election being stolen and give it to the people, we could pay their rent. What I feel we need to do today and to my board and to my neighbors and friends and tenants, continue to unite as Americans. Fight each problem as if it were our own. We would then be able to roll back the problem of the housing. We would be able to build housing that is truly affordable housing so that each person is able to afford it. So I'm asking you today, Americans, let's take an oath to become better Americans by uniting in our effort to do the right thing at all levels. And so I say, I am asking the board and I'm asking my mayor and I, I voted for him and I'll tell you out loud. And I'm proud that I voted for him and I'm proud that he's a black man. But that does not make me loyal to him. It makes me want to inspire him to do the right thing so that all people will respect all people, more than just a rent payment or to come out of this kind of collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kim Stettuto to be followed by Linda Seward.
Good evening, board. That little group of people that was sitting over there that were landlords, I heard one word from them. Dehumanizing. I want to tell you what's dehumanizing. Dehumanizing is asking me to live with rats and roaches. Dehumanizing is asking me to live fourteen months with no gas. Dehumanizing is asking me to live with mold in my bathroom. Dehumanizing is asking me to live with no security on my front door, no bells. That's dehumanizing. That shit he was talking was out of line. Okay? That's dehumanizing. You are dehumanizing my rights as a human being, but yet you want to consider him getting a rent increase while he continues to collect rent and give me the, the least amount of respect in my home or fix my home. I live on a fixed income like a lot of us. Another rent increase is only going to send me further either to the shelter system or on a poor line. I don't want, I didn't work all my life in this country for that. Okay? I didn't work all my life to make landlords rich off of my back. Okay? I didn't do that. I'm not raising a leader right there, Avery Bruce, for her to understand that her home could be jeopardized because you want to give people who are dehumanizing tenants, not landlords, tenants, an increase that they don't deserve. I didn't deserve to live fourteen months with no gas. I didn't deserve that, but I did it. I didn't deserve to look at rats run outside my front door, but I live with it. Okay? So while you sitting up here making those judgment calls and thinking what they said have some power, you better look around this room and you better understand that we, we, the people, will have the last word in this say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda Seward to be followed by Luis LeBron. Linda Seward, then Luis LeBron.
Good evening. My name is Linda Seward. Born, raised in the Bronx. I'm 70 years old. I have lived on the Grand Concourse for 38 years, and I'm coming to you as humble as I possibly can. I ask you to search your hearts tonight and vote for a rollback or a rent freeze. Prior to the pandemic, there was homelessness that was being ignored, and it took the pandemic for everyone to see what CASA and other organizations was talking about. And we are still living on the edge. Inflation is up 8%. Food, 10%, 20% up. My medication that I went to pick up the other day was 100% more. Paying 40, they wanted 80, okay? We are heading for a recession, and I know each and every one of you sitting up there knowing. During the pandemic, the landlords was buying and selling their properties. They were not hurting. As we know, almost 800 properties was bought and sold in New York. How can they be hurting? They're sucking everyday hard-working people and the city dry. The wealthy gets wealthier and we get evictions, okay? We need to have them open their books because they are able to get write-offs, and they do, at tax time. They don't talk about that. My landlord has properties in five states, five states, and he's out of Canada. We were without gas for 18 months. Some of y'all heard my story in 2019. 18 months out of gas. And you know what he was doing? Buying property because he didn't even care.
Thank you.
Okay? But to get anything done, you have to call 311 to get them to even clean the building, to wax the floors in the hallway, and to get your apartments taken care of.
Thank you for your testimony.
With already over 200,000 cases in housing court, if you increase the rents, that number will definitely jump higher.
Thank you for your testimony.
We got a rent freeze twice.
Thank you.
When homelessness started rising because of the evictions.
Thank you for your testimony.
And should be, we should be granted our rent freeze because we are still in a panic.
Thank you, Linda. Our next speaker is Luis LeBron to be followed by Marisol Morales. Our next speaker is Luis LeBron to be followed by Marisol Morales. Okay. I have N'gozi Ebunum to be followed by Ramon Catala.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is N'gozi Ebunum, I'm from Africa, Nigeria.
I'm sorry, could you please put on your mask, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
My testimony goes like this. I lived in my apartment for 15 years in Tansin Avenue. This pandemic, I lost my aunt. And the issue is that you people that work in the government don't care about us. The way you people treat us, you treat us like garbage. But because of God, we still live and surviving. The same rates that we get in our payment is what we still getting now. But the landlord keep on increasing the rent, don't care about our families. People that have kids now, the food is increasing and you people don't care about us. Right now, we need the rent, go back and freeze it. We need freeze, we need freeze, not even rollback, freeze! Because people don't care about us in pandemic, people dying. People don't care about us. People still dying, still now. And you people don't care about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ramon Catala to be followed by Santiago Ortiz. And please, just as a reminder, everyone, please put on your mask. It's the way that we protect each other.
Good afternoon, my name is Ramon. I live at 325. Where did you get that increase, such a great increase? Especially in the Bronx. Those kinds of increases, you should only offer those to people that live on Fifth Avenue or Wall Street. You know that most of the people that live in the Bronx were tenants that have our rent stabilized. You act as instigators. Dictators. In these last three years, it's been a disaster for everyone. Especially for the small business owners. A lot of businesses disappeared. That continued making money and became millionaires and owners of rent-stabilized buildings. The public officials that are before us. They defend the tenants here in the Bronx and all of Manhattan. It's difficult to fight against a dictatorship, such a strong dictatorship. You know that they say that laws change every year. Why don't we change those laws? So that we can move forward? The leaders? The New York leaders, leaders of New York. The mayor, the governor. And other additional leaders. It should be they, the ones that decide how much of an increase you offer to the tenants. And it should be those that make the offer of an increase to the people. The same as those public officials.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Santiago Ortiz to be followed by Brittany Robinson.
Good night, good evening, everyone. I have some stuff to say to you. This is the worst moment. This is a crime. This increase in rent. In a situation like this one. As all of us know, the recession is. It's finishing us all. People of low income. A person like me whose. A person like me whose income in retirement is 956 and who has to pay a rent of 929. It's sad. Are the most affected always. And that's why God is taking justice with all the injustices of the rich people that every day want to become even more rich. And we know that the problems in our apartments, we know that they're not being fixed in the appropriate way for people like us. We have a program that's called IRAC, and it's a program that supposedly is supposed to help us with our rent. So now I'm being helped and because I'm behind in my rent with this program of IRAC, and it's really, you know, like sub-managed. And a lot of people who don't have someone to advocate for them, an attorney, you know, and who are involved with a program like IRAC or another program, a similar program. And a lot of those people are being, they're now entering into a state where they may become homeless or they're becoming homeless because they did not seek out an attorney in the way that I did. And that's why we, you know, we have to ask that this, you know, don't increase the rent because this is the worst moment. This is a crime. And in that fashion, we ask you, do not increase the rent.
Our next speaker is Brittany Robinson to be followed by Megan Ruiz.
Hey, folks, how are we doing? We feeling good? Hi, my name is Brittany Robinson, and I'm a tenant organizer with Tenants and Neighbors. Tenants and Neighbors is a grassroots nonprofit organization that is dedicated to preserving affordable housing and protecting tenants' rights. I organize in several rent-stabilized buildings across Manhattan. These buildings are rundown, need countless repairs, and receive almost zero attention from their management and landlord. Just last week, 1833 7th Avenue, a Harlem building, held a press conference announcing their HB action and rent strike against their landlord. These tenants experienced a deadly fire that took the lives of three of their neighbors this past November. Since then, zero repairs have been made in the building. The only communication they've received from their landlord? A rent check every month. Even in the units that are currently vacated and cannot be lived in, a rent check shoved into the door that won't even close properly. These tenants live in unsafe hazardous conditions and yet are facing imminent rent increases. How is that right? 1833 is not the only building we organize in where the conditions are horrible. Pests, mold, broken elevators. Clearly, these rent increases are not helping the tenants. Here at Tenants and Neighbors, we stand with the tenants in this room. We stand with the Rent Justice Coalition, and we stand with all rent-regulated tenants, and we will continue to fight for a rent rollback. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan Ruiz, followed by Adriana Laura. Megan Ruiz.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is. And I'm a member of the Bronx, South Bronx Tenants Movement. I live at 352 East 151st. And the owner is named Valentina. I live there now about a year. And when I moved there to that apartment, after just a few months, the city came to check the apartments for lead. When I moved to that apartment, I didn't know that the apartment had lead. I'm a mother of three children, including a child that is one year of age. And when the city came, the apartment was full of lead. And asbestos. And so I'm paying $1,500 for just one room. And so they want to raise the rent. What do you want to raise it to? $2,000, $2,500? The sink is on the floor. I have cockroaches. I have mice. I have mold in the bathroom. And the room, the entire window. The windows of the buildings disappeared. The windows of the building are broken, the building smells like pee pee, urine, it's an awful urine smell.
Nunca limpia el edificio.
They never clean the building.
Entonces quieren aumentar la renta con esas condiciones tan barbarias.
And so they want to increase the rent with conditions that are so barbaric?
Eso no tiene ningún sentido.
That makes no sense.
Porque primeramente, no le dicen a la dueña que arregle el apartamento o el edificio completamente que se está cayendo.
First of all, they should tell the owner that the entire building is falling apart.
Para uno pueda vivir con dignidad en el apartamento y así uno pueda pagar una renta asequible.
And, you know, we should be able to live with dignity within the apartment.
Porque eso es increíble, cómo uno va a pagar una renta cuando las condiciones no son adecuadas y más cuando uno es madre que tiene niño. El que tiene dinero puede pagar una renta como quiera, pero el pobre no puede pagar una renta con las condiciones como estamos, que está todo caro ahora mismo.
And, you know, with those kinds of conditions, how, you know, do you expect us to pay the rent with those conditions that are not adequate? You know, you have children also. If you can afford to pay for a sitter for your children, then you can afford maybe to pay for that increase.
Yo vivo en estos pisos y el ascensor se daña cada rato.
I live on the sixth floor and the elevator is always broken.
Ahora pintaron la entrada y uno se da un atrayó en cada rato cuando neva.
And they painted the entrance and?
Entonces cómo quieren subir la renta.
So how do you expect to raise the rents?
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Adriana Laura and then Jeannie Dubnow.
Adriana Laura?
Adriana left. So we, next is Jeannie Dubnow to be followed by James Garcia. Jeannie Dubnow? Oh, great, we can wait?
Okay, hi.
Hello.
My name is Jeannie Dubnow and I'm a member of Rena Riverside Edgecombe Neighborhood Association in Washington Heights, and we love our CASA people. So, this is not rocket science. You don't have to be an economist to know what's what. I just want to read you today's New York Times a little bit. "In Manhattan, the average rent on an apartment newly leased in May was $4,975 a month. 22% increase from the year before. Poor landlords, they're not making it. On the other hand, you're talking about rent stabilized. Roughly 1/3 of renters are severely rent burdened, meaning they spend more than 50% of their income on rent. Those are mainly your rent-stabilized apartments. Those are the ones you want to increase. Now, let's not pretend that the RGB public members are representing the public. This is the public here. You're not representing us at all. You... Mayor Adams obtained most of his campaign money from real estate. Let's not play games, let's not pretend. He appointed you guys. He's the one who decides who's going to be there. Now, we know our tenant reps are our tenant reps.
Thank you for your testimony.
But they're a tiny minority, a tiny minority, and this has always been true.
Thank you.
This is a farce. This year is an emergency for tenants in rent-stabilized apartments. You're pretending there's no more pandemic? What we have to have this for then?
Thank you for your testimony.
Oh, the pandemic is finished!
Thank you for your testimony.
It's not finished, it's not finished.
Our next speaker...
We say no, and we blame Mayor Eric Adams because he wants this.
Our next speaker is James Garcia to be followed by Jasmine DeJesus. James Garcia to be followed by Jasmine DeJesus. James Garcia? James Garcia? Jasmine DeJesus to be followed by Tina Halloway.
Jasmine DeJesus? Jasmine DeJesus?
Tina Halloway to be followed by Teresa Diaz. Tina Halloway?
Teresa Diaz, ask her. Teresa Diaz, Teresa Diaz después. Diaz, señora, se puede empezar? Va a ser después de la señora aquí.
All this time I've seen you doing this with ease.
Oh, it's okay, I got it, I got it.
I'm tall.
Hold on, hold on, we figured it out.
Okay, that's great, thank you. You can hear me? Okay. Good evening, everybody. My name is Tina Halloway. I am a tenant of Slumlords. I'm hearing everybody's complaint here, and there's nothing really new I could put to this other than just my voice. I have to deal with rats, we have to deal with roaches, we have to deal with tenants, not tenants, management not doing what they assigned to do. I signed the contract, a lease, you call it, and it says that we are supposed to get maintenance. I didn't see that maintenance yet. Been there for 12 years, 12 years, and it's just getting worse and worse and worse. When I first moved into my apartment, in this complex, it has seven buildings, we have a courtyard, we had a laundry, a laundromat. Now, there's no washing machines, there's no dryers, there's nothing in there but rats and roaches. You want to raise up our rent, but where's that rent going to come out? Our ass? We don't have no jobs, we don't have nothing. Everybody's losing stuff here left and right. Whatever food that our food stamps pay for in the supermarket, if we can't cover it with the food stamps, we have to put cash to that. Where's this rent coming from? I'll wait. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Diaz to be followed by Gilberto Vargas.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Samantha Diaz, and I'm a resident of 1187 Anderson. I've lived there for 22 years. And all I've been hearing from my fellow tenants is the same complaints over and over. I know I'm tired of hearing it. I know you're tired of hearing it, but you're not listening. We have a right as tenants to live in conditions that are sustainable. Instead, we're living with roaches and rats, mold? How are we supposed to live in our apartments? I have a younger brother, and I want him to be raised in a home that's suitable for him. But instead, he has to make do with roaches and mice and potentially breathing in mold. The landlord does nothing for us. We call, he doesn't answer. So we're asking you to answer the call. Because we're here right now and we need you to listen. When I look at your faces, I'm hoping that you're hearing me. I'm hoping that you're hearing us because we're speaking loud and clear. So whatever you have in your ears, I hope you clean it out. Because we have a right to live in a home that's safe. My door doesn't lock all the way, it's a violation of the law. So when a fire breaks out and I can't get out, my brother can't get out, and my mom can't get out, what can I do? All we're asking for is to roll back that rent. What are we paying for, for you to just sit on your butts and do nothing? You can sit in your nice mansions, your nice houses, your nice townhouses, while we have to live with mice and roaches. How is that fair to us? It's not. We have to fight back because we have rights as a human. You're a human being, so treat me like one too.
Our next speaker is Gilberto Vargas to be followed by Aurelia Gibson. Gilberto Vargas?
Gilberto Vargas? Señor Gilberto Vargas? Roberto Vargas?
Gilberto. And followed by Aurelia Gibson? Gilberto Vargas? Aurelia Gibson? Joanne Oman? Joanne Oman? Frank Lam Tigua? Frank Lam Tigua? Thank you. Joseline Gomez?
Joseline Gomez? Joseline?
Robert Gums?
Yo!
You're up. After Robert, we'll hear from Jervine Samuels.
Yes, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm a resident of the Bronx, I'm a native New Yorker, and I want to thank everyone here for inviting me to this, I don't know if I should say farce or circus. I will not be back again. I noticed that America is the only country where they refuse to understand that there's a correlation between poverty and mental health, crime, domestic violence, lack of education, health, etc. Now, the conservative, right-wing Republicans in this country and in this state, they say that all these folks here, we are somehow, we are trying to replace white males. Now, I don't know, my spine is all ripped up from my service to this country, which when I come to a place and I see this shenanigans here, you people make me sick to my stomach, and you make me ashamed that I gave 25 years of my life and service to this country. Now, the bottom line is, we have just, we're supposedly on the tail end of the worst pandemic since 1919. And the only thing that your landlord masters have to say on the subject is, well, yeah, let's raise the poor slobs' rent. Not only is that inhumane, it's bad politics, it's bad policy, and it's just plain, it's just plain mean, quite frankly.
Thank you.
Now, you buzzers sitting up there, you have a nice fat check because all you have to do is kick out about, how long you going to have been here? About seven hours? So you have to put up with our anger, our humiliation.
Thank you for your testimony.
And, you know, that's it.
Thank you.
And you have the opportunity to sit there like a little punk and act like
Thank you for your testimony.
Your little Lord Farnory, where these people are suffering.
Our next speaker will be Jervine Samuels.
Human need.
To be followed by Natalia Marquez.
Each one of you clowns are full of shit.
Jervine Samuels to be followed by Natalia Marquez.
And I'm going to make sure that the mayor knows exactly how he feel.
Our next speaker is Jervine Samuels.
Take a good look.
Jervine Samuels to be followed by Natalia Marquez.
Hello, my name is Jervine Samuels. I live at 1230 Woodycrest Avenue in Hybridge Street. I am also a member of CASA, and I'm here to say that the landlord I have, he's terrible. He doesn't do what he's supposed to do, he doesn't fix things. When you call the management office, they don't pick up, and they don't answer your calls, but yet they want to raise the rent though. And he also wanted to take away our rent stabilization. We had to fight to get to stop that from happening. We have a landlord, we're living with rats, mice, roaches, repairs that he don't do, and the attitude of the management or the way he treats us is terrible. He tried to take away our rent stabilization, and he wasn't paying the Con Edison bill. He had $120,000 Con Edison bill, he didn't pay. But yet he want to take our rents from us, he want to take all our rents. And I'm here fighting for all the tenants in my building and all the tenants in the neighborhood. I believe this week that we should have no increases because the landlords are not doing what they should do. And it's appalling, it's a shame, it's terrible what they're doing to the tenants. And we have rights just like they do. But they, like they said, the speakers before me, you are not listening to the tenants of the city or the Bronx. Why should we have to live in these conditions and have recent rent increases? We should have to live like this. It's a shame, it's terrible what they're doing to us.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Our next speaker is Natalia Marquez to be followed by Jorge Valderrabano.
Hi, my name is Natalia Marquez. I came here all the way from Flatbush, Brooklyn. I am a rent-stabilized tenant. This means a lot to me and a lot to my neighbors. 2.4 million New Yorkers, 2.4 million of us. That's how many rent-stabilized tenants there are in this city. Did 2.4 million of us vote on a rent increase? Did we vote for a 6% rent increase? Who voted for that? Who? Nine unelected members of the Rent Guidelines Board, is that democracy? Is that democracy? Clearly, this system is rigged against us, right? If we put our rent increases to a vote, the rent would never get increased, it would get decreased. They don't represent us. They represent a tiny minority of New York City. The landlords over there, who they let go before us. They don't represent us, so I'm here to say, I'm not speaking to them, I'm speaking to you. I'm speaking to my fellow tenants. We're tired. We live in apartments with cockroaches, with rats, with leaky faucets, with repairs that never get done. We work all day to come back to those conditions, but I'm saying we can't be tired. We can't be tired, we have to keep fighting. We have to keep fighting. Because we demand a 0% increase, a 0% increase, but the landlords, they can financially deal with a decrease or a front freeze. They can deal with those things. What keeps them up at night is tenants organizing and uniting. That's what they're afraid of. That's what they're afraid of. So we need to talk to our neighbors, we need to organize, we need to fight. So we need to talk to our neighbors, we need to organize, we need to fight, we need to fight, not just for a 0% increase. We need to fight and we won't stop until we get housing as a human right for all people, all people. Landlords make our lives hell so we can make their lives hell.
Thank you for your testimony.
We're gonna keep fighting and fighting until we get housing as a human right. I'm gonna ask if you guys are tired and you're gonna say no. Estas cansada?
Jorge Valderrabano.
Estas cansada?
Followed by Laura Cruz. Jorge Valderrabano, followed by Laura Cruz. Jorge Valderrabano. Jorge Valderrabano. I'm sorry, is he here?
Hello, I'm here. Um, so I'm Jorge, I'm from Mexico. Uh, I, I live here a few years ago. I live in an apartment with four other, with three other people, in one bathroom. We have roaches, we have mold. Uh, I never see the landlord around, only when he calls or knocks the door to ask for the rent. I study, I have two jobs, one full-time job and a part-time job. I pay the whole, the rent with the whole salary for one full-time job. And it would be hard for me to, and the other three people who I live with, to pay an increased rent. Now, I find that you want to increase the rent, uh, and you are not even doing these hearings in every borough or to a wider audience. And if one of us cannot pay the rent in my apartment, then the other three of us would have to pay for it, and that's unfair. And that is something that we just cannot do. Increasing rent means increasing the, uh, the risks for living homelessness, uh, of working extra hours, and that affects the youth, that affects the elders, that affects the BIPOC communities, the immigrants, and everyone that is not the rich class. Uh, what you're doing is clearly hurting the working class. And, and with this proposal of the rent increase, you are just benefiting the interests of the landlords, of the rich, of the major atoms, and everyone else that is not us. Uh, how are you working to support tenants to be able to pay the rent? How are you helping us to see our rent translated into a better place to live? Which redistributive policies are you proposing from your position? We need to decrease rents and housing is a right. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Cruz to be followed by Juan Diaz. Laura Cruz?
Laura Cruz? Laura?
I'm sorry, is Laura here?
No.
Okay, um, Juan Diaz? Juan, Juan, Juan Diaz? Jorge Herrera?
I'm here.
I'm sorry, just after, after Juan, we're gonna have Jorge Herrera and then Estela Agüera.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name is Juan Diaz. I li- I live at 1187 Anderson. The door of my apartment does not close properly or lock on its own. God forbid, God forbid, that that door stands in violation. It's, it's not as intended, but as a human being. My mother and my sister have conditions, as in breast cancer, diabetic. They can't live in these conditions. I don't know what you're thinking, but I'm saying, don't raise the rent. Don't raise the rent! Don't raise the rent! Don't raise the rent! Thank you.
Thank you, Juan. Our next speaker is Jorge Herrera, followed by Estela Agüera, and then, and then Monti Cabba, I believe. Monti? Jorge Herrera? Jorge? Estela Agüera? Okay, all right, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the next person, I'll put, I'll put her behind. Uh, is it Monti? I can't read the handwriting. Monti Cabba? I, I, I think that should be fine, or, yeah, that seems fine. Um, does she need a, a French translator? Is Alvin available? Does, does she have someone to translate for her?
Does, does she speak French?
Great, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I got the mic, I got the mic.
So this is Monti, right?
Oh, God, gonna workout tonight.
Buensoir. Je m'appelle Monti Cabba. Je suis, je louge à 1113 Sheridan Avenue. Appartement G R A. Mon lindo c'est 1113 Sheridan LLC. Je vis comme un esclave dans ma maison, dans mon appartement. Il y a pas, il y a des gros souris qui dorment avec moi, qui nous, qui nous, qui dorment avec nous dans la maison. On passe la nuit avec les souris. Les murs sont détruits partout, les rats ont cassé partout. Les cuisines sont détruits, les cabinets sont détruits. Le baignoire, on peut même pas se laver dans le baignoire tellement que c'est gâté. J'ai appelé 311 plus de trois fois. Ils sont venus regarder, inspecter la maison, mais pas de suite. Pas de suite. À chaque, à chaque année, la rent augmente, ça double de fois. Pas de réparation, vraiment diminuer les rents. Pardon, nous sommes des pauvres. On n'arrive même plus à dormir avec le problème de rentes. On respire difficilement. À partir du vin, on arrive pas à dormir. On a des problèmes avec ça. Parce que si tu payes pas, on va te mettre au dehors, ou bien tu vas au charleter. Et nous, on ne veut pas partir là-bas. On s'est débrouillé pour payer notre maison. Et on souffre dedans, on souffre énormément. Pardon, le gouvernement aidez-nous, s'il vous plaît. Nous les pauvres, aidez-nous, s'il vous plaît. Merci.
My name is Monti Cabba. I live at 1113 Sheridan Avenue for 13 years. My landlord is 1113 Sheridan LLC. I live like a slave in my apartment. There are, uh, huge mice everywhere. I spend all night with them. The holes have walls all over, in the kitchen. Uh, it's, there's holes in the kitchen cabinets. Uh, also, the cabinets are destroyed. The bathtub is completely, um, ugly. And I've tried to, I've called 311 more than three times and nothing has happened with it. Um, and every year, the rents are doubled. There's no repairs. Please, uh, lower the rents because we're poor. We can't sleep with the rents, we have problems breathing because we're so worried that we're gonna be put out on the street or a shelter. You all are the government, you can help us. Thank you.
Our, our next speaker is Estela Agüera, followed by Mariatu Diallo.
I'll be reading on behalf of Estela as well. My name is Estela Agüero.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, is Estela here?
I lived at 1475 Townsend for 20 years.
Is Estela here?
No.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next person who's here.
My landlord is New Settlement Apartments. Rent increases will impact us in a very negative way.
Mariatu Diallo to be followed-
Socially, psychologically, and emotionally.
By Samantha Diaz.
The high inflation is already affecting our life.
We're gonna go to Belinda Gallegos?
We will end up being homeless.
Mariatu Diallo.
Because of the inability to pay the rent increase.
Is Mariatu Diallo here?
Increasing the rent is not the solution, it will worsen the problem. Therefore, no rent increase. Let's fight together to stop the injustice.
Mariatu Diallo?
Uh, she's not here, I don't believe.
Samantha Diaz?
Yes, Samantha?
Is, is Samantha here? She spoke already, thank you. Belinda Gallegos? After Belinda, we have Ji Hyasong?
Ah, good evening. My name is Belinda Gallegos and I am from 1188 Grand Concord. And I am here to say no. No, no hay justificación para el aumento de renta.
There's no justification for the rent increase.
Maybe you are here, I don't know, it's a paid job or for, or por ganancia política. Nosotros estamos aquí para tratar de salvar hogares de la gente de nuestra comunidad.
So we're here to try and save homes for people in our communities.
La próxima vez que compren un café, reciban un delivery, o vayan al dry cleaner, o se han atendidos por un trabajador de salud.
The next time you buy a cup of coffee or you, uh, receive a delivery at home or you get your clothing from the dry cleaners.
O atendidos por un trabajador de la salud.
Or you are taken care of by someone in the healthcare system.
Podrían estar siendo servidos por una persona que ustedes causaron perder su hogar.
You might actually be taken care of or being, uh, attended by someone that you actually put out on the street.
En el voto, en el voto preliminar, escuché los abogados de los landlords diciendo que el aumento de renta que ustedes propone.
In the preliminary vote, I heard the attorneys say that the vote that you're proposing
No le va a añadir ni un centavo de ganancia al bolsillo de los landlords.
Will not add a single dime to the, or line, uh, the pockets of the landlords.
El dinero del aumento, dijeron.
The money of this increase, you said.
Va ir a mantener el nivel de reparaciones en los apartamentos.
Will actually help to increase the amount of repairs in the apartments.
Yo me pregunto cuáles reparaciones.
I ask myself, what repairs are you talking about?
Se les ha permitido a los landlords contratar a trabajadores no certificados en ningún oficio.
Landlords are actually, have been allowed to hire non, uh, licensed contractors.
Cualquier persona puede ser super.
Anyone can be a superintendent.
En mi edificio, la misma persona es el promero carpintero.
In my building, the same person is the plumber, the carpenter.
El exterminador, pintor, electricista.
The exterminator, the electricist, the, uh, painter.
Y si su landlord es como el mío y tiene cinco edificios en una área de cinco blocks.
And if your landlord's anything like mine, who owns five buildings in five blocks.
Tenemos que compartir super también con los otros edificios.
We also have to share a, a, a super with the other five buildings.
Las reparaciones son de muy mala calidad.
The repairs are of abysmal quality.
Y todo esto es porque el landlord no quiere gastar en reparaciones.
And again, this is because the landlord does not wish to pay, uh, pay anything for, for repairs.
El otro argumento que dieron los abogados de los landlords es el costo de la electricidad.
The other argument that the landlord attorneys offered was the cost of electricity.
Mi landlord no provee electricidad en invierno.
My landlord doesn't offer electricity in the winter.
Y hemos llegado a dormir con el abrigo, el gorro, y los guantes puestos.
And we've actually had to sleep with our coats, our hats, and our gloves on.
O pagamos 250 dólares más de electricidad en el invierno.
Or we would have to pay 250 dollars additionally for this.
El otro, la otra argumento de los, uh, abogados de los landlords.
The other argument that is stated by the attorneys for, uh, the landlords.
El recibo del agua.
Is the, is the water bill.
Como broma creo yo.
As a joke, I think.
En el recibo de la renta que recibimos.
On the rent bill that we all receive.
Dice, reporte las fugas de agua inmediatamente.
It says, please report any water leaks immediately.
Hay vecinos en mi edificio y lo tengo grabado en video.
There are actually neighbors in my building and I've actually recorded this on video.
Thank you, thank you for your testimony.
Que por semanas, 24 horas al día, el agua está corriendo.
And for weeks, uh, on end, 24 hours a day, the water is just leaking.
Porque el landlord no manda a nadie para repararlas.
Because of course the landlord tells no one to repair this.
Thank you for your testimony.
Gracias por su testimonio. Algunos llaman proveedores de viviendas a los landlords.
Some, some people dare to call landlords providers for homes in this country.
Nosotros sabemos que nos son proveedores de vivienda, son los landlords.
Ji Hyasong, uh, Ji Hyasong, to be followed by Gisela Sanchez Gomez. Ji Hyasong?
If the, if the, if the real estate business
Ji Hyasong?
Is so bad for landlords while they are still in the business.
To be followed by Gisela Sanchez Gomez. Ji Hyasong? Ji Hyasong?
Hello, my name is Song Ji He, I don't know who Ji Hyasong is. She's not, I don't know who, where's the missing rent, rent board guidelines guy too? I don't know where he is either. I am not a rent stabilized tenant, but I, my rent is under the rent stabilized level and I am deadly scared of these rent increases. Rent stabilized rents are supposed to be the base for New York. They are supposed to be affordable to working people. These increases aren't affordable, they're ridiculous. What do you think is gonna happen to the millions of unprotected tenants when you raise the base this much? We will all be displaced. We are still in a global pandemic, we are in a recession. We don't have money. Working people did not make the billions of dollars of profits that the landlords and the bosses and the developers made. We lost our jobs, we went into debt. That's why you should lower the rents. The landlords can't afford it. They've been building luxury tower after luxury tower after luxury tower across this whole city. They've been cutting our heat, our water, they've been allowing mold, they've not been doing the repairs, they've been allowing our buildings to fall apart and you expect us to believe that they're broke? We are broke. We can't afford it. It is not complicated. Lower the rent for every single working person in this city.
Lower the rent! 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 Get rid of rents!
Our next speaker is Gisela Sanchez Gomez to be followed by Glorabel Castillo. Gisela Sanchez Gomez, then Glorabel Castillo.
Buenas noches. Este, yo pertenezco a una asociación de inquilinas en mi edificio y a casa.
I pertain to a tenant association of buildings and homes?
En mi edificio, en el 1188 de Gran Concord, este, yo, yo estoy pagando una renta de 1800 dólares.
Eleven, I, I'm paying?
1800.
1800 dollars.
Para mí es una renta super cara.
It's a very expensive rent.
Porque los ingresos de mi hogar, mi esposo es el único que suple.
My income in my household, my husband, he's the one, he's suffering, the only one.
Porque yo tuve un accidente en el trabajo y tengo dos años que no trabajo.
Because I had a work-related accident and there, it's been two years since I worked.
Mi, tengo un hijo con discapacidad.
I have an incapacitated child.
Y mis hijos son jóvenes y son estudiantes universitarios.
And my children are young and they are university students.
Este, no estoy de acuerdo con que se haga el aumento de renta.
I'm not in agreement with the passing of a rent increase.
Porque al igual que como yo estoy en esta situación, hay mucho más personas que están en peores- que están en peores condiciones que la mía, porque hay personas que no están trabajando.
In the same way that I am in this difficult situation, there are people that are in worse situations than I am in. There are people that are not working.
Y hay otra persona que ya están retirado y lo que está recibiendo son poco dinero.
And what they are receiving is very little money.
Además de eso, en mi edificio.
In addition to that, in my building.
El elevador se vive dañando, que si lo arreglan hoy, dura dos días bueno y los otros días sin servicio.
The elevator, they'll fix it and it'll only last for about two days, so then it'll just be out of service from that point on.
Y mi hijo que tiene ciertas condiciones, yo temo de que se caiga por la escalera bajando escalera, y muchas veces tenemos que coger por el techo del otro elevador para pasar por encima para bajar la escalera a mi edificio.
And my son, he has that condition, and so I'm always afraid that he's going to fall if he's going down the stairs, so a lot of times we have to go up to the roof to catch a different elevator.
Entonces, yo me pregunto si como no somos nosotros que estamos en esa condición tan difícil y con más condiciones de que las reparaciones no la hacen como la deben hacer.
And I ask myself, we're in such a difficult situation and with so many repairs that are due to be done, but they're not made.
Sería un premio entonces que ustedes deban dar a la persona que no hace lo que deben hacer en los edificios.
Would it be a reward? Is it a reward that you would give us to make those repairs?
Muy buenas noches.
Have a very good night.
Our next speaker is Glorabel Castillo, to be followed by Otto Montenegro.
Good evening, everyone. My story is, I had a business in Soho at 195 Christie. And because I was the only Spanish, the landlord came to, brought me a letter saying that I had to pay 1,200 dollars for a water pump that he had to apply downstairs in the basement. So I said to him, this is not my concern. So he just kept on fighting, because I was, I guess, Hispanic, but I knew my laws. So I said, let's go to court. He thought that I had forgotten about what he had told me before, that I need to pay the pump. He had forgotten, because when we went to court, I grabbed him on the side and said to him, now I'm gonna tell the judge what you told me. As soon as I reminded him that, he called his lawyer on the side and said, you know what, we have to lower ourselves. So he was playing dirty with me all the time. Now, finishing that and starting a new story, I work three jobs. I haven't, for three years, straight ahead, I worked three jobs, not sleeping, one on. It is so sad to stand here. Very sad. My daughter is studying medicine, and she tells me, "Ma, do you have the money for me to go to college?" I said, "Yes, I do." She said, "But ma, you're not working now, you need to pay rent." I said, "I prefer to live under a tree than you continue your school." It's very sad, very sad.
Thank you for your testimony.
Okay, but you have to do something about it, because the landlords are dirty assholes.
Otto Montenegro, to be followed by Maria Budram. I'm sorry, could you put your mask on, please? Thank you.
Sí, muy buenas noches.
Good evening, everyone.
Estoy aquí por decir algo breve y rápido. Mi nombre es Lucas Montenegro.
So I'm here to speak very briefly, my name is Lucas Montenegro.
Mi país es chileno y mi madre es ecuatoriana.
And my mother's from Ecuador.
Eh, 1236 de Gran Concourse vivo.
I live at 36, Grand Concourse.
Appartement 35.
Apartment 35.
Quiero decir nada más, no molestades a ustedes porque sé que están cansados.
So I don't want to bother you, because I know that all of you are tired.
No quiero que quede esto en palabras.
And I don't want to just say this with words.
Mi padre fue un político en Ecuador, porque mi padre es ecuatoriano. Y tengo un privilegio a los policías porque mi padre es policía en Ecuador.
And of course I have privileges from the police, because my father was...
Ellos se entienden porque estamos aquí, también son hijos y padres, hermanos.
My father was a police officer in Ecuador, so of course many people in my family are in the police department.
Solamente quiero decirles a ustedes que están en la mesa.
I would just like to say to all of you that we shouldn't just leave it at this.
Porque republicanos y demócratas, tenemos que hacer un cambio.
Republicans and Democrats, we both have to make a change. Perhaps I'm no one to you. But there's a whole bunch of people here. We're tired of this.
De mucho rata, mucha cucaracha, ya todo se ha hablado, plomo. Tengo una hija que tiene asma, 14 años, es nacida en este país, estoy yendo a una corte.
And I'm going to court.
Soy ciudadano americano, trabajo para la ciudad.
I'm an American citizen, I work for the city.
Solamente quiero decirles nada más esto para no cansarles.
And I'd just like to state to all of you, not to tire you anymore, let's do something for this city. Because it is a huge country, it's an amazing city.
Este es el mejor país del mundo, América. Demostremos que somos América!
We are in the US. We're not like Europe.
Ustedes que están en la mesa, ustedes tienen. Porque mañana yo puedo estar ahí en esa mesa.
I can actually be at that table tomorrow.
Nada más quiero decirles, muchas gracias.
I just wanted to say that, thank you. Our next speaker is Maria Budram. Maria Budram?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
I'm sorry, could you put your mask on, please? Thank you.
Can't speak to my mask.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Again, we are here for the same old school story, a rent increase. The last time I was here, I asked you, gentlemen and ladies, if you ever take a walk in the Bronx to see the situation tenants lives in, I'm sure you didn't. Because if you did, you wouldn't be here tonight to say the landlord need a rent increase. I live in a landlord bidet. I'm living there 20 years. My landlord have 138 violations. What happened? Nothing. He get away with it. All he did was to sell the building to another person. From 2016 until now, scaffolding is around the building. And everywhere you go in the Bronx, where there's landlord building, you see scaffolding and no work done. You wonder what is happening? So many people homeless, so many children on the street. So many violence is happening, all because of what you are recommending. Landlord get abatement. What we get, nothing besides rent increase, rent increase. We just got out of a pandemic. We are in a recession, and you're here to say, in this recession, you need a increase? I don't think so.
Thank you for your testimony.
Because if you do that, we're gonna have more people dying, more people getting more crazy, even our children.
Thank you.
Right before our eyes are perishing because of your reason for giving landlord increase.
Thank you for your testimony.
Think of it.
Thank you.
Can you go to your bed tonight and say, "I have done a good job"? No.
Thank you for your testimony, thank you. I have one, I have one last speaker. I have one last speaker, but it is only one name, the name is Doe? One last registered speaker, Doe? I only have one name, Doe? Is there a Doe here?
Ay, creo que es la última, ¿no? Hola, me llamo Doe, quiero hablarle aquí a mis vecinos del Bronx. Que esas personas no les importamos para nada, ¿verdad? Ellos tienen el poder.
So hello, my name is, my name is, I'm sorry, your name?
Doe.
My name is Doe, and I'm here with my neighbors from the Bronx. These people don't care, they're all in power.
Ajá, y para que nos bajen la renta o para que nos congenen la renta, ellos tienen que ser humanos.
And of course, for rent to be lowered or frozen, you know, we have to be bad people. We have to be the bad ones.
Pero como hemos visto en la historia de cuando ellos votan, cuando llega la votación, ellos no nos bajan la renta, ¿verdad?, nos la aumentan.
But as we can always see from history, whenever the voting takes place, they don't lower the rents, they vote against that.
Entonces, ¿qué significa eso? Significa que ellos no son humanos.
But what does that mean? That means that they're not human beings.
Que ellos actúan de una manera inhumana.
That they act inhumanly.
Que ellos no se compavesen de nosotros.
That they have no compassion for us.
Entonces, es el deber de ustedes.
So it's your responsibility.
De bajar la renta.
To reduce the rents.
To do a rent rollback. That is your duty as a human being. It is your duty to all of us. And I know you don't care. I know you don't care. But I just wanna let you know that that is your duty. You are a human being. You have to feel for us. Because if you don't do a rent rollback, then something is wrong with you. That's a mental illness, right there. That's it.
Thank you. So I would just like to say thank you to our translators, who translated for a long time today, so we're grateful for that. We've heard all of our speakers, if there's a motion to adjourn. Christina D has a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Alex Schwartz seconds, we adjourn. Thank you all for your service.